Okay. Well, welcome everybody to the Worcester School Committee. And I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're going to do the Pledge Allegiance followed by the National Anthem. Nayali Roman will sing the National Anthem from Dority Memorial High School. So we'll do the Pledge Allegiance first. Aye, Pledge Allegiance to the flag.
... United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Oh, the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the brave and the home of the brave?
Thank you. A roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Present.
Member Biancheria? Member Beninda?
Here.
Member Guardiola?
Here.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Mailman?
Present.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member Roy?
Here.
Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay, first up is the consent agenda. A roll call.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria? Member Beninda?
Did I do something wrong here?
No.
Oh, you have a question?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Just in regards to the donation from, who was that there? The George Alden Trust regarding the Vet Tech Clinic at Worcester Tech High School. I'm just wondering, I know we have Mr. Waymouth here, I'm just wondering if we could just get a little overview of this, this money? I mean, it's a significant amount. I know they've done a lot of great work up there. I had a chance to walk through there yesterday and kind of see what's going on and what the vision is. But I think it'd be important to hear from Mr. Waymouth in regards to what's going on up there. Thank you.
Mr. Waymouth?
Through the chair. Thank you for the opportunity to answer your questions.
Is the white on now?
Now, it's on.
Yep.
Through the chair, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight and answer your question about the vision of this project. I'd like to allow my colleagues to introduce themselves so we can answer any questions you might have tonight.
Dr. Patricia Sumala, the Director of Career and Technical Education at Worcester Technical High School.
Alistair Cribb, the Dean at Cumming School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University.
So before you tonight, you have $2.5 million donation from Alden Trust and a $500,000 donation from the Cumming School. So in total, $3 million, which is the projected cost of this project. This project would renovate the current advanced manufacturing space to modernize, upgrade, and increase the space of our vet assisting program. Our vet assisting program has been a model for the nation in collaboration with the Cumming School since its inception in 2012, but since its inception has also been undersized. And so this opportunity before us will allow us to approximately triple the size of the vet clinic, which will be a benefit to the community by increasing the number of clients that we can serve and their pets. It will be a benefit to our students at Worcester Tech because it will allow more opportunity for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors to integrate with the clinic, work alongside doctors and vet students. It will be a benefit to the Cumming School, and I would let Alistair Cribb answer questions in regards to that.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, I have no other questions. I just wanted them to explain, I want to thank the Cumming School for partnering with Worcester Tech and the work that you guys are doing. It does look good up there. It's a work in progress. I can't wait to see it expand and the work that our students along with Tufts could do for people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Biancheria, followed by Member Beninda.
Thank you. It's just like, as always, great project, great partnership. Quick question on this, and that is, when all of this is being worked on and getting completed with the funding, we're looking at no dollars from Worcester Public Schools at this time? To the Chair of Administration?
What was the question again?
We're not looking at any dollars from Worcester Public Schools. Our budget?
For this program? House Superintendent?
Through the chair. No, the school has managed to make this happen with the donations that they've acquired.
So all of this is partnership dollars?
Correct. Aside from staffing, of course.
I'm sorry?
Aside from staffing, of course. That's...
Not understandable, yes. And the other question I had is, while this is going on, are students will still be able to run the veterinary piece of what we have for a clinic? And will it be a drawback for any of the kids? Will they be missing a piece of this while the construction and everything, the updates are being done?
Mr. Waymouth?
Through the chair, the space that is being renovated is currently vacant. There will be no disruption to the current operation of the program.
Excellent. Thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you, Member Beninda.
We'll forward to seeing it.
I'm excited for this because I can remember waiting and meeting and trying to figure out where we would get the extra money. So, once you get this extra money, is there more money you're still going to need from different sources in order to get it up and running?
I can answer that, yes. So this funding will fund the construction of this space. The equipping of this space will be covered by Cumming School of Veterinary Medicine, and we'll bring another $2 million maximum to the table to cover that. We've purchased most of the equipment in the current space, which will move over. And of course, we cover the salaries of our faculty that share the teaching with the high school students.
Great. And so my other question is, I know when we opened it up the first time, Worcester Public School, people could not bring their animals there. Is that going to be the same now, or is that going to expand?
Sorry, I'm not sure I answered the question. So, so the question was, could...
Say, teachers at the school, what, were not allowed, like, really to bring their animals for care there, when that was the agreement prior to this? With the, with the expansion, would that change, or would they be allowed to do that?
So I guess I'll, so we sort of set the guidelines for the clientele, and the clientele have to meet means testing because we are not charging market rate. That's part of the situation. This is not something that we have discussed.
Okay.
I think it would be possible to consider that that would be possible, but they would have to be at market rates because we have donations that support it. And we face the same challenge, of course, with our own school and how we deal with staff. So I won't commit to it, but I think I appreciate and understand the intent behind the question and how it would be facilitated.
Yes, great. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Member Roy?
My question is, in the, as the children are learning about veterinary practices and being able to put that application to work, I'm wondering, are they also be able to learn about the business end of maybe someday owning their own clinic? You know, run the bills, the billings, the setting appointments? That kind of, that kind of end of it?
Sure. Through the chair, as a former instructor in the program as well, the students definitely learn about the practice management piece, as well as animal care, and supporting the veterinary technician and the veterinarian within the practice team.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to maybe partaking my animals to bring to these children someday for care. Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All set, everyone? So we will do a roll call on the consent agenda. Start from the beginning.
Member Alvarez?
Yes.
Member Biancheria?
Yes.
Member Beninda?
Yes.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes. I have a held item to request the Administration to give information on the alternative drug and intervention programs provided to our students, grade seven through 12, and will of the turn it around drug program that was reduced due to budget cuts by the Administration. Member Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what I'm looking for is to know, I know that the project was cut back. Unfortunately, we do have some problems and some students in need of more assistance. I'm wondering what is in place of the five-day programs for further support and intervention in addition to what we are doing for the turn it around with provided support and intervention? And what happens when the child is caught with drugs or vaping devices and other contraband? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, send that to the Administration. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. While we have public comment, any member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before them for two minutes. So two minutes, your name, city of residence, and item number.
Yes. Fred Nathan Worcester. So, just to piggyback off the item about the, about the alternative drug program. Times have changed all over. And it's a sad thing that we can't keep drugs out of schools, no matter what we do. Because a student might come in and everything might seem normal to you, but secretly, they probably have drugs on them, and you would never, ever, 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 ever know it. You could search them, and you'd probably never find it. And that's sad. So having said that, taking money out of that budget that tried to help these kids, I think is even worse that that money was taken out of that program. I know she hasn't, I think she said it yet, but as a reporter of the superintendent, so from here anywhere together, sense of belonging and climate, culture, safety. You can have all your climate control people that you want, but if drugs are getting into the school, and there are fights in the school, and the teachers are afraid, and the students go, can't have that. You got to bring the police back into the schools.
Anyone else? State your names, city of residence.
Anne Bureau, City of Worcester. And when we've spoken to our parents, their, the sense of safety and belonging in the school is very important, how the school addresses discipline and inclusion of kids and addressing racism. And the parents have, even before we met the new superintendent, were very concerned with the need for restorative practices. And the recent youth violence data for the city, the number of police incidences in the schools have gone down from 200 to, I think, 160 in my notes. So we just really want to thank the Administration for its new approach, really trying to create a welcome environment for all kids, and a new focus on restorative practices. We really appreciate that. And the item that I'm speaking of, I'm sorry, is 415. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jorge Sierra from Worcester. And I just want to, I want to speak item 415 as well. And I just want to echo what was just said. We want to go forward. We don't want to go backwards. I believe that what we're doing right now is working. It just takes some more patient. I'm someone that suffered from gang violence, been in this wheelchair for over 30 years. So I know when a school system, a city system, some type of system turns around and gives up on certain individuals, that we're one decision away from making something amazing or just turning our lives upside down. So I just want us to be patient with what we have in front of us right now, because it's working. It might not be moving as fast as it needs to, but I, I'm an advocate of the youth of City of Worcester. Our city is growing. It looks beautiful. And we want to grow within the city and the people that are in the city as well. That means the future of our, of our city. So I just want to echo, thank you for all that's being done and that is in place right now. Let's just have some more patience as we do go through that. Appreciate you.
Thank you. All set.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the time to say something about the agenda today. My name is Frances Antis. I live in the City of Worcester. For me, looking at the agenda, I saw some connections that made me feel good about moving forward. And that would be not only the superintendent's report on belonging and that climate, which we're looking forward to, but also for the first time in, I think, my lifetime, which is really a long time, we're looking a little bit about what the appropriate boundaries for the schools would be, or looking at, at least looking at that question. And I really appreciate that we have to move out of the last century and move forward in this century. And it seems to me that that's one of the issues that is important. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have somebody online, then we have, is it Dina Todeski? Can you bring her on? You're on mute right, there you go.
Yes, thank you. Hi. My name is Dina Todeski. I'm a resident of Worcester, Morgan Street, and I am also a parent to Worcester Public School graduate, recent grad, and a seventh grader at Goddard Scholars at Sullivan. Sorry, I like had to race to my laptop. I apologize. I wanted to discuss something or mention something about ROS 4-15. First, I want to say, I think the superintendent and her team are doing an amazing job on all fronts. I also want to highlight that I think students, especially students at Norbeck and at Sullivan Middle School, feel welcomed and are welcomed, like literally welcomed, as they walk into the building at the start of the day. They also have a sense of like, have a great day, enjoy the rest of your day, as they leave the school. So it's not just as they're coming in, it's as they're heading out, back home to their families or whatever activities they have. With prioritizing the restorative practices, excuse me, versus the punitive actions, more students are in school and learning academically. They're building skills because they are at school, and their regular supports are there. So they're getting meals, their breakfasts, lunch. They also have the access to the wraparound coordinators, et cetera. Excuse me. And when students are happy and interested in going to school, they are more engaged. And if their children feel engaged, parents and families are as well. And we're definitely seeing that in some of the PTOs, for sure, at Norbeck Elementary and Sullivan Middle School, in my opinion. And I've been part of PTOs for close to, almost 15 years, have seen a wonderful uptick in fresh ideas and new volunteers, some of who have been longtime Worcester Public School parents, and are now just finally feeling welcome and included and want to be involved in a variety of things, not only coming in and helping in the library and field trips, but after-school activities like, or, you know, evening activities as well. I've also been an active participant in the Safe Team Sessions, and it's been an excellent collaboration to see on all, all the folks that are there involved, from the Worcester Public School admin and staff, educators, and of course, the parents and community partners come together in those opportunities. Excuse me.
Thank you. Can you wrap up your comments too?
Absolutely. I sure can. I got one more thing to say. That's it. And then taking time to value those voices and ideas has really given some good opportunity to think outside the box for creative and inclusive solutions. So thank you so much for my, taking time for my comments.
Thank you. So that's everybody. Okay, we are on the reporter superintendent, from here to anywhere together, sense of belonging, climate, culture, and safety.
Through the chair, as the team comes up to present, you'll note there's a few more than usual, and that's because climate, culture, and safety is a very complex, dynamic endeavor. It doesn't take just one or two people when we talk about the needs of individuals, children, staff. We, lots of brains need to be coming together to make that happen. So I want to thank the team that is here this evening, and we have some individuals in our audience as well that are also here representing this work. So tonight's objectives, school committee members will receive information. We're going to start with the physical safety in the Worcester Public Schools. You'll hear from Dr. Matt Morris on that. And you also learn, hear more about the safe community work. So just a reminder, the mayor asked for a collaborative approach to safety in our schools, and so we started SAFE, which stands for Safe and Free Education. We started this work last school year, and we want to update the committee on what's happened thus far. Then we'll turn it over to our working on the climate and culture work. So receive information on climate, culture, breakthrough strategies for this school year. You will hear from Tom Tony, our Administrative Director of Positive Youth Development. You'll hear from Dr. Lampi, did I say it right, Andrew? Lampi, I know Lampi, my apologies, who will go over the data with you. Then you'll also hear from Dr. Tatum and Dr. Conley about how this is playing itself out in our schools. So those key data points regarding climate and culture. And then we have asked the team from Burncoe High School to come and really just give a synopsis of what does this look like in practice at a school level? So we really, we can talk very theoretically and what policies and procedures we've put in place and those supports. But when it breaks down, not breaks down, when it trickles down to the school level and it's actually being done at the classroom and school level, that's really where the rubber hits the road. So we want to hear from those individuals. Next slide. Just like all of the report of the superintendent that have been presented to the committee in the past and will continue, this is grounded in the strategic plan that was approved, our promise to our future. And specifically tonight, we're looking at climate and culture. And so the next slide, every single one of the aims that are in the climate and culture will be addressed tonight. We will be talking about the, the increase in the school committee members' feelings of being valued, safe, and a sense of belonging. So we'll share data on that. We're going to share some entry-level data, some baseline data around cultural responsive pedagogy, and connecting learning to students' backgrounds, experiences, and interests. And then finally, we're going to share the impact of the restorative practices and how that is making a difference on the climate and culture of our schools. Next slide, please. With that, I believe I'm turning this over to Dr. Tatum, who will just do a reminder of where we have been this school year. And before, Dr. Tatum, just before you, one more thing. The data that you're going to see, committee, is the district in the aggregate. So it's pulling everything that's going on in our district and pulling it together. And in the aggregate, the data is improving, and you will see that. Please know that we are well aware that we, we have some schools that need additional support, and we are working on providing that additional support. So don't want you to think that we are not aware of some of the needs in our district. We have those needs, and we see improvement. And so we want to celebrate the improvement as we work on continuously making sure all of our schools have that consistency across the board. With that, Dr. Tatum, you are on.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Manares. My name is Kareem Tatum. I'm the Executive Director of Schools for the North Quadrant, and I'm going to provide a brief synopsis of where we began in our journey to improve upon the sense of belonging that exists in our Worcester Public Schools. If you recall, last spring, we presented the district's priority focus areas in relation to culture and climate. As you can see from the slide, our focus areas remain the same. We will continue to focus our efforts on increasing student engagement, utilizing restorative justice practices, providing mental health supports for our students, and increasing student supports. This year, we are focused on deepening this work by continuing to build the capacity of our stakeholders, which includes our administrators, faculty, staff, and students. Next slide, please. So this slide highlights the changes that were made last year. I'm going to identify those as, as breakthrough strategies. And these are the things that we'll continue to strengthen this year to improve upon the culture and climate in our school system. As you can see, there are a number of school-based supports and practices. We have culture and climate teams in each of our schools. We have wellness rooms last year. It was at the high school level. We have expanded that to our middle schools this year. We will continue to use restorative practices and continue to focus on the social, emotional interventions that we can provide for our students. In terms of specialized staffing, we have our culture and climate staff of our quadrant teams, or Q teams. We have our Deans of Students. Last year, they were in all of our large high schools. This year, we've added Deans of Students to our large middle schools. We continue to have our wraparound coordinators and our school adjustment counselors, as well as our culture and climate assistants. As you all know, last year, they were in our high schools, but we've added that to our large middle schools this year. And in terms of what we're doing to align to our vision of a learner, obviously, working on future-ready skill instruction, really working to develop the sense of belonging, which is the focus of our report tonight, providing self-advocacy, advocacy, and really trying to engage our student with student voice. We have our high school superintendent, Student Advisory Council, that has been thriving for the last couple of years. And this year, we're beginning a Student Advisory Council for our middle school students as, as well. This is our roadmap ahead. I'm sorry, next slide. This is our roadmap ahead in how we continue to refine these practices. Obviously, we want to deepen and strengthen the breakthrough practices that we've discussed. We want to continue to provide training to improve upon the structures that we have in place, and really focus on continued improvement and innovation, and really seeing and analyzing the strategies that we've, we've engaged in to make certain that where we continue to make growth in these areas. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Matt Morse, who is our Director of Safety, and he will speak to the physical safety within the Worcester Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Tatum. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm going to spend some time discussing our work as a district to address emergency preparedness, improve security hardware, and to enhance security technology. And in so doing, to strengthen overall our district's culture of safety. Please go to slide 10. As work occurs and will occur to, around strengthening our safety and preparedness, a strong culture is essential. People are the most important factor, and this begins with school leaders, all school staff, students, and members of our community. Also important are the protocols and technologies that we continue to use to ensure that our leaders and staff become proficient with these. Our culture will commit us to this work and will sustain this work across time. Slide 11, please. Training is one key to building capacity and strengthening our culture of preparedness and safety. We're now in year two of implementation of the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol across all Worcester Public Schools and sites. This protocol addresses how schools communicate internally about response to threats that are internal to or external to the school building. In addition to training and ongoing communication with principals, there's been work done by principals to train their staff and students on the protocol. We've expanded information on the Worcester Public Schools website to provide parents and caregivers with more information about the protocol and its actions. In addition, when a school uses an action within the protocol, we have established practice within our communication protocols to include a statement for caregivers about what that action means and why it was initiated in the school for that event. We will continue to seek ways to ensure greater familiarity with the protocol among all stakeholders. Specific groups trained on the Standard Response Protocol have included the training of school nurses last year, and most recently, training on the protocol was conducted with staff... and most recently, training on the protocol was conducted with staff from the Worcester Public Library who manage our one-city-one-library programming at certain schools. The I Love You Guys Foundation has also created a newer module for non-school sites and municipal offices. Training on this Standard Response Protocol, MUNI as it is called, this framework began yesterday at the Durcan Administration Building and will continue in coming weeks at the Durcan Administration Building and all of the non-Worcester Public Schools' school facilities, including Fanning, Pick, Head Start, and 115 Northeast Cutoff and Head Start Administration Building. This past August, we worked with the I Love You Guys Foundation to deepen our understanding of the process of student reunification that would occur if students and staff needed to be moved away from a school or site due to an emergency situation. This process is quite involved and involves a district-level team being deployed at the reunification site to support students and staff arriving from the school. Training consisted of two days at one of our reunification sites. Day one was a refresher on the Standard Response Protocol, and day two involved training and three different iterations of the reunification process to allow our department heads and principals to experience the process through the perspectives of staff, student, and parent, caregiver. This coming January, we will be hosting staff from the I Love You Guys Foundation as they will be training our assistant principals and deans and other staff who were unable to attend the training this past August. Slide 12, please. Required safety drills are one means of ensuring that our training and processes are effective and where they need to improve. In our district, we are in year two of using a safety drill data collector as a means to measure and ensure that schools are meeting the expectation that we have for different types of drills. Each school year, students are expected, and schools are expected to participate in fire drills, bus evacuation drills, medical response drills as well. In addition, we're asking schools to conduct drills on the actions within the Standard Response Protocol, and in each case, schools, school leaders are expected to enter data from the drill onto a dashboard that we have available. Slide 13, please. Another essential component of this work is, in school safety, includes hardware and technology. Completed and ongoing projects include the vestibule project that began last year. Vestibules were installed in our open-classroom schools, as well as new lock and door hardware projects for interior classrooms and office doors at approximately 12 schools. In addition, there are some other projects, including exterior door numbering at all schools and sites, which will allow for clear emergency response, and we anticipate continuing with the installation of surveillance cameras and electronic door access at schools that do not have these devices, and items that are based and prioritized by us based on the guidepost audit. Those are just an overview of some of the work that's been ongoing the past year. At this time, I'd like to turn things over to Mr. Tony.
Thank you, Dr. Morse. So SAFE, Safety Advisory for Education, or what we call SAFE, is a collaboration of educators, leaders, caregivers, union representatives, community organizations, and members, as well as Worcester Public School leaders. SAFE is focused on promoting school safety and student wellness through proactive measures and community engagement. This group, this working group, supports district administration in the continuous improvement efforts to address school safety, climate, and sense of belonging. During the 2023-24 school year, our working groups explored key topics of establishing trust, creating a common language and understanding, common language and understanding, as well as developing core values. We will continue to meet this school year with a focus on the vision and mission and subcommittee work. This has truly been a collaborative task by the Worcester community, and we want to thank those involved for their commitment, honesty, and willingness to work together. Next slide. So sense of belonging and our breakthrough strategies. So here on this slide, you see that culture and climate has been a longstanding focus for our schools. This school year, we are moving forward, are moving our work forward with the school-based supports and practices that foster a positive culture and climate in all our schools. As we continue our ever-evolving work of providing inclusive and supportive environments for both our students and staff, we have strengthened the development of various initiatives, including school-based culture and climate teams, wellness rooms, and restorative practices. Our culture and climate teams at our secondary schools are working to improve the sense of belonging for students and staff, as well as increasing student engagement by establishing clear expectations and routines for all. Additionally, the deans and culture and climate assistants that are at our secondary schools are being supported with opportunities for professional development to support the skills of our staff so that we can continue to offer spaces for emotional and social growth and development. At the elementary level, these teacher teams focus on enhancing their work and establishing a sense of belonging for all and celebrating student accomplishments. Our Q teams are supporting this work in schools by providing coaching for teaching, leading professional development, and working with our staff members to create school environments focused on sense of belonging. Q team members are completing the development of a guidebook on classroom structure for a success that aligns with our NTSS work. You will see a short video later that will showcase just a small glimpse at our school's great work around this. The wellness rooms are now at four comprehensive middle schools and five comprehensive high schools. These rooms provide a calm, supportive, and learning space for all our students. Our staff members who work in these rooms will be receiving continuing training on consistency, at-risk behavior, mental health and emotional wellness, de-escalation, and restorative practices. The wellness rooms afford secondary students the opportunity for student growth, guidance, reflection, and success. This school year, we are focused on gathering data around the utilization of these rooms. This data will allow us to reflect on the times of days, reasons for the visit, and recidivism rates, so we can make adjustments in our schools that enhance support for all our students. Administration and staff members at all our schools emphasize a supportive approach to discipline that refrains consequences as learning opportunities. Restorative mediations are helping students repair relationships and foster accountability while schools maintain a safe environment. Deans, wellness room instructors, SACS, and culture and climate assistants are implementing the restorative practices for students to help them understand their actions, how those actions affect others while repairing harm and reshaping behaviors. On this slide, in 2022, the discipline law changed in Massachusetts, requiring documentation and implementation of alternatives to suspensions for 37 age and three-quarters incidents. In response to this, the district worked with principals, assistant principals, and district staff to explore and expand upon our alternatives to suspension. Subsequently, we focused efforts upon our social-emotional staffing, as well as training our staff members. During the 2023-24 school year, we analyzed the support programs we had in place and closed those exclusionary programs where students were removed from their homeschool learning environments. Moving forward, the district is focused on utilizing our growing knowledge of successful student supports, and we plan to scale, improve, and implement effective strategies to support students' success and well-being. So what are we learning? So we are learning that our breakthrough strategies are becoming more refined and are functioning more effectively. We see that students are responding positively to their increased support and specialized staff. This success is due to the district's dedication to culturally sustainable practices that reflect the diversity of our community. Tonight, we have many of our staff members in the audience, and I would like to recognize our staff members and their efforts to build strong, meaningful relationships with our students, our caregivers, and the broader community. They have worked purposely to foster trust and create lasting connections. The continued refinement of breakthrough strategies, the commitment to culturally sustainable practices, and enhancing the strong community relationships will continue to pave the way for the lasting success in supporting our students, our staff, and our district. I would like to pass it on to Dr. Lampke.
Thank you. Now, we will transition to looking at some results from the district's comprehensive culture and climate survey system. To begin, I'll provide brief context about the data to be looking at. The district uses an online platform to administer culture and climate surveys throughout the year to students in grades four through 12. There's an annual full-scale survey in March of each year, and much smaller, much shorter pulse checks at three other time points in the year. In the following slides, we'll present data from the pulse check conducted in October, supplemented with data when available from June's pulse check and March's full survey. And finally, you'll see data presented as the percent of students who responded to a particular topic favorably. And the first figure you see on the slide shows the percentage of students who indicated that they felt like they either belonged quite a bit or completely belonged in their school. As you can see, across all three grade levels, there has been a large improvement in the percentage of students who feel like they belong since last March, and these also represent large numbers of students on the whole, and students in younger grades tend to indicate favorable responses more than in older grades. Next, turning to sense of engagement, we see a similar pattern. For both middle and high school students, their sense of engagement has increased steadily since March of last year, and the growth has been comparable at both school levels. Encouragingly, this growth represents an increase of more than 1,000 students who indicated a favorable sense of engagement in October than in March, and this is even despite the fact that more students participated in the survey in March than they did in October. Next, we show the percent of students who had a favorable perception of school safety. We can see that at the elementary and middle school level, responses are relatively stable, decreasing by only one percentage point. At the high school level, however, perceptions increased by seven percentage points, representing hundreds of students who feel safer this year than last year. The culture and climate survey also includes questions about students' perceptions of the standards that they are held to. In March and October, students were asked how often their teachers make them explain their answers. You can see that the percentage has decreased in elementary school, remained stable in middle school, and has increased in high school. Students were also asked how often their teachers encouraged them to think about their answers rather than simply memorize them. October was the first time this question was asked, and the district will continue to track responses to this question moving forward, but you can see that just over half of all students indicated a favorable response in both middle and in high school. Finally, we show you responses to questions regarding culturally responsive instruction. Both of these questions have not been asked of students before, so there is no historical data to compare to. The question for the panel on the left asked about whether students felt as though their backgrounds and identities were reflected in the materials they use in their classes. As you can see, less than a quarter of students responded favorably to this question at any school level. And the question for the panel on the right asked about whether students felt as though their backgrounds and identities were integrated into their learning. More students responded favorably to this question than the other. Responses were highest in elementary school and about the same in middle and high, and as with the previous slide, the district will also continue to track responses to these questions moving forward. So to conclude our section on student surveys, the data have led to the following conclusions. First, we see that students are reporting increased perceptions of engagement and feeling like they belong in their schools. Students' perceptions of school safety continue to be a priority area, particularly for our youngest students, and students generally report feeling as though they are held to high standards, but these rates can be improved, and the percentages of students who report feeling represented in their materials and in course content is low. As such, in sum, these data demonstrate that initial efforts in the culture and climate realm are working, and students are demonstrating positive effects as a result, but there is more work to do to help improve students' experiences and perceptions even more. Now, I'll turn it over to Dr. Conley.
I will now share with you how our district addresses the behavioral and social-emotional issues that give rise to student misconduct. Next slide. School Committee Policy, JIC, on student discipline underscores the foundational principles that contribute to a positive and productive school environment. The policy highlights the essential roles of respect, responsibility, and adherence to both the rules and the larger legal standards in promoting positive behavior and responsible engagement in our school system. We have worked diligently over the years to have schools that not only communicate clear expectations for behavior, but model these daily as well. Unfortunately, there are times when issues arise relative to discipline. When this occurs, our schools ensure due process for all our students. When deciding consequences for behavior, our administrators have been trained in appropriate responses and adherence to the law. Next slide. Over the last decade, there have been changes to state guidance and laws on discipline. In 2014, Chapter 222 comprehensively changed Massachusetts' discipline laws by limiting the use of the long-term suspension as a consequence for student misconduct under 37 age and three-quarters, until other consequences had been considered and tried as appropriate. Additionally, it required students to make education services available to students who were excluded from the classroom or school for any type of disciplinary offense, so they had an opportunity to make academic progress. Then, at the start of the 2022-23 school year, another impactful change was made to 37 age and three-quarters. The Act Addressing Barriers to Care for Mental Health aimed to reflect a commitment on prioritizing mental health, equity, support for students in schools, with an emphasis on the holistic and preventative approaches to both behavioral health and discipline. This law mandates that school authorities consider alternative remedies like mediation, conflict resolution, and restorative practices before suspending students, with the aim of promoting re-engagement and learning through inclusive disciplinary practices. Our discipline approach begins with providing clear expectations, positive reinforcement, and social-emotional support for every student. When an issue does arise, we follow the law and echo the sentiment of the school committee policy on discipline, that all students deserve every opportunity to achieve academic success in a safe, secure learning environment. Research has shown us that suspending students from school for nonviolent offenses, and particularly suspending them repeatedly, has limited effectiveness on improving their behavior and performance, and causes students to fall behind academically. We focus on discipline as a learning opportunity for students by being transparent with families, having open communication to address concern, using restorative practices, and providing alternative remedies. Key to this is that our SEL staff members, our deans and our APs, document and track their methods of interventions and their successes. As a last resort, we will implement suspensions. We have created both assistant principal and dean academies, following a longstanding tradition of principals' academies in the Worcester Public Schools, so that we can train our administrators to ensure that their decisions are balanced, fair, and considerate of all efforts to intervene and support.
Now, I'll turn it back up to showing some data regarding disciplinary resolutions in the district and comparing them to the same point in the year for last school year. To start, though, it's important to remember the context in which student discipline exists. These figures here show the percent of the student body who received at least one of the three major disciplinary resolutions as of the 50th school day of the year for last year and for this year. And on this slide, there are two things to note. First, as you can see, the percentage of students has decreased for out-of-school suspensions and emergency removals, while it has increased slightly for in-school suspensions. We will cover these patterns in more detail momentarily. But second, and most importantly, notice the actual percentage of students who have received these resolutions relative to the entire student body. In all instances, less than 1% of all WPS students have received any of these three major resolutions, meaning an overwhelming majority of students are not involved in any of the three. With that context in mind, we turn to looking deeper at out-of-school suspensions. On the left, you can see the total number of out-of-school suspensions as of School Day 50 in this year and last year. The 54 fewer suspensions this year represent a 17.4% decrease. And on the right, you see what are called risk ratios. Risk ratios allow us to compare the rate at which students from a given group are suspended to the rate at which students from all other groups are suspended. We do this since different groups make up different proportions of our student body. If a particular group of students is suspended at the same rate as all other groups, they have a risk ratio of one. Ratios lower than one mean that a student group is suspended less frequently, and ratios greater than one indicate that they are suspended more frequently. Risk ratios greater than three are considered indicative of a significant disproportion. Risk ratios greater than 3 are considered indicative of a significant disproportion. As you can see in the figure, there have been some changes in the risk ratios compared to last year, with some groups going up, others going down, but no group has reached the significant disproportion threshold. Now we look at in-school suspensions. As you can see, the number of in-school suspensions has increased since the same point in last school year, rising from 82 to 136, and a majority of these increases exist at the high school level. You'll also note, though, that risk ratios are closer to 1 for Hispanic and Latino students, L students, and students with disabilities compared to the same point last year, and no group crosses the 3.0 threshold. And now we look at the number of emergency removals. As with out-of-school suspensions, the frequency of these is lower this year than last year. There are too few instances of emergency removals to calculate risk ratios, so they are not displayed here. Instead, we highlight how these emergency removals have changed at the school level relative to last year. While elementary school has seen an increase, both middle and particularly high school have demonstrated decreases. Finally, we close out student discipline by showing you the most common incidents resulting in a disciplinary resolution for last year and this year. And our purpose in showing this is to illustrate the commonality of reasons over time. And please also keep in mind that these percentages are not in relation to the overall number, or, excuse me, are in relation to the overall number of disciplinary resolutions, not percentages of the student body. As you can see in SY24 and SY25, four of five reasons for out-of-school suspensions are shared year over year. Fighting and physical assaults are two of the most common, as are repeated school violations and disruptions of school, both of which can take different forms. Here, for in-school suspensions, we see many of the same incidents. Again, fighting and physical assaults make up some of the most frequent reasons, as do school violations and disruptions of school. But note, however, that while fighting was the top reason for in-school suspensions as of this time last year, now it is the fifth most common. And finally, we show the reasons leading to emergency removals. Three of the five are shared across both SY24 and SY25 so far, but there are also two things to note from these data. First, this year, fighting does not make the top five, which is an improvement relative to last year. And second, while 17% of all emergency removals were caused by physical assaults on employees, these represent fewer than a dozen total incidents, of which nearly all occurred at the elementary school level. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tony now.
So what are we learning and what are we seeing? So we are seeing that the overall frequency of major discipline events has decreased compared to last year. We are still seeing, we are still experiencing the same types of incidents occurring. There is evidence that infractions related to fighting and physical assaults have decreased in comparison to last year. However, efforts to address vaping and smoking in our schools are showing effective progress with fewer discipline infractions. Yet, substance consumption by youth continues to be a concern at our local and state level. We have evidence that the gap in disparities in discipline rates among marginalized students' group is closing. While we are proud of the progress that we are making, there is still important work to be done to further reduce disciplinary incidents in addressing ongoing concerns like vaping, ensuring continued improvements in school culture and student well-being. Now we'd like to pass it on to the Burnco team.
And as the Burnco team comes up, I just want to share some news. This week, many of our, all of our high school teams actually, were able to attend a training with the Rise Network down in Norwalk, Connecticut. We visited Bryan McMahon High School, and our Rise Network focuses on the success of our ninth-grade students, making sure that our ninth-grade students are on track, with the hopes that if they're on track as ninth graders, the rest of their high school careers will be much better for them. And the Burnco team was featured in the Rise Network magazine for the great work that they have done with their ninth-grade students. So I'll turn it over to the Burnco team and Principal Ewick.
Good evening. Some of the challenges faced by the administrator is balancing daily operations while trying to support educators and continuously improve instruction and achievement for students. By supporting improved operations, climate and culture specialists are really able to support increased opportunities for professional development as well for teachers. For example, we've been able to increase the number of professional learning communities over the last three years, holding 18 this year. It's a significant improvement. Teachers are alleviated from a duty each week as a result of participate. They're collaborating on creating standards-based lessons, engaging activities for all students, and it's really a targeted intervention that I feel is a major reason for the improvements that we made over the last year. Right now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Falcoochi, Dean of Students, regarding school culture and the intentional shifts that we've made over the last two years.
Thank you, Mr. Ewick. Thank you, Superintendent School Committee, for having us tonight. So to echo Dr. Tatum and some of the information he shared about the Rise Annual Report, which was just released. Rise partners with 55 schools across 32 districts that span six states, and we were one of, I believe, two or three schools that were chosen to be featured in the annual report. So why we were featured, because over the last two years, we've seen an 18% increase in our on-track rate. Last year, we saw a 13% increase in students who earned Bs or better. We saw a 38% decrease in grade-nine suspensions. We saw a 3.4% increase in grade-nine daily attendance, and we saw a 9.7% decrease in grade-nine students who are chronically absent. If we look at the whole school picture, we are working through our restorative discipline practices to hold students accountable in a way that builds their skills. We are looking at mediation, conflict resolution, restorative conversations with staff and peers, ownership of their actions, and we do a lot of this through work with student, school adjustment counselors, as well as restorative detentions after school. And on Saturdays, where a student's just not sitting in a detention by himself, we have trained social-emotional staff there to support the students in, you know, reflecting and improving on their actions moving forward. From school year '23 to school year '24, we saw a 42% decrease in school-wide suspensions. Our suspension number year-to-date this year is almost identical, representing that we'll be able to maintain those significant gains that we've made, and a large part of those gains is because of the climate and culture team that we have at Burnco High School. I know we have other deans here, and they'll say their team's the best, but I truly believe that my team is the best. They have the pulse of the school, both staff and students. Anecdotally, I can't tell you how many potential incidents or events or conflicts they have stopped because they've been able to come to a member of the administrative team because they've built these strong, lasting, trusting relationships with the students. So we are more aware than we've ever been because they are truly the eyes, ears, and heart of our school. So I am now going to turn it over to Denny Brigley, one of our climate and culture assistants, to briefly share.
How's it going? I'm Denny Brigley, Climate and Culture Assistant at Burnco. You know, I'm not sure what kind of information you're actually looking for, so I was just going to describe a little bit what goes on in a day when we're there. The very first thing is building and building upon the relationships we've already started with the kids. You know, we talk about welcoming, and, you know, every day, every kid that walks by me, I'm like, hey, what's up? How's it going? You know, how was your day? What are you going on today? How was that class? And even if I've seen them five, six periods in a row, you know, I'm still checking in and seeing how their day's going. And it allows us to, we don't have an academic relationship with them, and we don't really have a, you know, administrative relationship with them. We're kind of in between, you know, in between where we're an adult, a mentor, that's how I see it, you know, somebody that they can, you know, lean on, but somebody that they can trust will give them the proper advice on what they're doing during the day. You know, once you build those relationships, you can actually get a lot of information and feel what's going on in the school. You know, we have kids coming up to us, hey, this is what I heard, so-and-so is planning this, and then we can go and report it and try to help stop it, you know? And building those relationships is really the key. You know, one of the things that I believe that we do there is regardless of what happened yesterday, last period, the day before, the next time I see a kid, they could have been disrespectful to me, it happens, but it doesn't matter because today's a new day. And, you know, hey, how's it going? It's great to see you again. How's your day today? A little better today? You know, is everything going well? And that brings a lot to the students. It's something they don't have, you know? They go to class and they have to sit down, they do work. In between classes, you know, they may be stressed because their friend wasn't talking to them, or, you know, they're worried about their clothes, or whatever may be going on. Maybe they don't even have something to eat, you know? You know, but they feel comfortable enough to come up and talk to you about those things. They feel safe. And it's one of the things that I really enjoy about it, you know, the relationship part of the kids, because, you know, they're all individuals, and we don't always need to see them as students. We need to see them as kids and teens and young adults and the people they are. Each relationship is a little bit different and takes time to build them, build the relationships, but once you get them, it's, you know, great for the students, it's great for us and the staff, too, because sometimes the staff, I've had staff thank me for helping them with a kid who may respond to me a little bit differently than they would, you know, a teacher or a staff, because, you know, it's a different type of relationship. So that's kind of how, you know, we deal with there, and I really enjoy the job. I think, you know, I'm lucky to have the kids in my life.
So thank you, team, for the presentation, and I want to close by really sharing two things. First and foremost, you can have a positive school climate and hold children accountable and teach them new behaviors. It is not an "or," it is an "and." And the School Committee Policy requires that we do that. And so the job of the superintendent and the administrative team at the school level is to implement what the School Committee Policy says. So we are practicing restorative practices, we are working on building positive school climates, and we are holding children accountable and teaching new behaviors. It's a lot of work, and it's a lot of hard work. And as the individual who came earlier, what was his name? I wrote it down. Jorge Sierra told us, we need time, right? Give it time. When you're shifting the way that humans, lots of humans in a school, interact with each other, we have to teach new behaviors, meaning we have to also let go of previous behaviors. And that's really for the adults and the children. So we are doing both in Worcester Public Schools. It is an "and," it is not an "or," and we are following what is in the School Committee Policy. I want to thank the teams that are doing this heavy lift because it is very, very difficult. And we heard the impact that now we're starting to have on the academics because I really do feel like we've got a really strong foundation in the culture and climate. So it's not just culture and climate, they go hand-in-hand, you need to have both, and that's what we're working on Worcester Public Schools. And most importantly, it makes me so happy, and I'm sure it makes you happy as well, to see the children say that they are feeling a difference. Hadn't even thought about the impact on the families, as we heard some of our committee members say, but that's also a positive. So we opened that up, opened it back to you, Mayor Petty, for questions.
Thank you. Maury McColl, Ball Bay Member, Neilman.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for the presentation tonight and for everyone that came out to speak. I think it's really important to hear from the people that are actually doing the work every day, and I really do appreciate it. I do apologize, I had some pre-written notes for tonight and then some notes that I took during the presentation, so if I jump back and forth, I do apologize. But first of all, you know, echoing what the superintendent just said, you know, this is really complex and multi-layered. There's so much that goes on when we talk about climate and culture and school safety because it incorporates both the physical component of safety, feelings of safety, and infrastructure safety. So really, there's just so much work that is a part of this whole topic. So, you know, I'm very supportive of the work that is being done by the superintendent and administration, and I'm happy to hear that the report doesn't just include the positives and the talk of change, but how we know it's a cycle of continuous improvement. I'm extremely happy with a lot of the progress we've made and the work being done around the climate and culture for the students and the educators and the staff with a feeling of a sense of belonging. I love seeing the success stories around the climate and culture roles, and really can't say enough about what Denny just shared. I think that's really incredible when you look at that role, to have somebody that's in it say how they feel like they're a mentor and they're making a difference in someone's life, and that it's not just what he's doing for the kids, but what the kids are doing for him. Like, how fantastic is that to have somebody feels like that about their role that they're going to each day? That's just excellent feedback around that matter. I'd also like to compliment the improvements that we continue here at the middle school level, and I know that during the presentation today, we heard that, you know, the deans and the climate and culture assistants have been added at the middle school level, too, and I've heard a lot of great feedback around that. And we know post-COVID, we have really struggled at the middle school level, at all levels, really, but how crucial it is during those years to get those students to a place where they're ready to be getting off to high school with a good start and a good finish in middle school for a good start for high school. I do have some questions around alternative programs, kind of tying into the, when we talk about discipline and things of that nature. So through the chair to administration, is it possible just to get kind of a high-level answer right now, but then maybe a report back about how, when a student has reached the point of needing an alternative setting, those types of decisions are made, and, you know, how we, this is probably maybe a little bit more of a long-term information back, but getting an information back about how those programs are chosen for specific students, what our expectations are about getting them back into a traditional setting, and how we're supporting our administrators when they have students that may need that type of alternative program through the chair? So maybe get something back on that, would that work?
Through the chair. May I ask a, just a point of clarification? You're referring to both alternative programs in public day settings that we have, correct?
I would say everything that we utilize for our students, whether it be the comprehensive, I mean, the collaborative, any of our programs specifically within the district, and how we utilize those for our Worcester Public schools, pardon me, students. Thank you. All right. Then the next thing, you know, you went over a lot about the discipline, and I really appreciate hearing about the clear expectations and accountability, because we know that we have policies and laws that we have to follow, and we're certainly not naive to the fact that there are incidents and issues that do occur in schools, and, you know, as mentioned, you know, these are teenagers, these are kids, these are people that have had trauma in their lives and are coming to school with all different types of experiences, and we know that we need to show them how to be accountable for their actions, but also work them through the types of progressive discipline. I think it was on page 30, the chart about progressive discipline. And I personally, you know, I feel for myself, and I would think many other committee members, want our educators and administrators want our educators and administrators to know that we do support them when it comes to utilizing discipline when it is warranted. And just wanted to know if there is a possibility through the chair to administration to maybe give some additional examples of what escalated consequences might be throughout the district? And are these types of things that are practiced consistently throughout the district, through the chair?
Through the chair. Mr. Tony, would you be able to just speak to some of what are some examples of escalated consequences a child may have?
Yes, through the chair. Hopefully, I get it right. Escalated, you mean like a serious fight or?
I think it was the third line item on that. You know, the initial was, you know, maybe having clear expectations around what school policies are and your responsibilities. Then, you know, it might be the restorative practice mediation. And then I believe the third one was escalated prior to when it be an obstacle suspension or something more serious.
Yeah, so depending on what it is, the serious ones, we go straight to, not straight to, but in some cases, to keep the school safe, suspension is there. But in other cases, we are working with a restorative mediation in some cases. In some cases, we have what we call, I think, what's these middles here? They practice a structured day where we're taking, we're having that that incident or that that behavior, that kid stays in school, but we are walking them to classes and they're taking like the social part of their school. And then, you know, they're still in class and learning, but they're taking out of that social thing. And we're seeing some good results from that. And then the process is all, after we exhaust all our alternative suspensions, then we are looking towards the suspension part of our ability.
Thank you. And additionally, it's probably a second part of that question through the chair to administration. There is talk of in-house or in-school suspensions as part of the report, but I know there's some maybe disparity about people understanding, you know, what we used to traditionally think of as like in-house suspension room or in-school suspension room. Do we still have those in our middle schools and high schools? What do those look like? It sounds like a little bit of what Mr. Tony just described. With the structured day of Worcester East is more of the student being less exclusionary. But is there a situation where, you know, they may need to be in a different setting, but not removed completely from school through the chair to administration?
Yep, through the chair. We are having principals utilize the wellness room in those cases. So we're putting students who, you know, have, you know, they might be a little bit more escalated than the structured day and having them work in those wellness rooms with that instructor and stuff like that.
Thank you. Because I did notice during the presentation, it was referenced that there was an increase from 82 to 136 of those types of situations. But I think that's important, right? We're showing that those students are being held accountable and that we do have those opportunities for them to not be totally excluded from the school setting, but realize that their actions have consequences and that, you know, this is how this is being handled in this case. But if your behavior continues to escalate, then we do look at other measures. I'm just sorry, I apologize again because some of the stuff might be repetitive or came up during the presentation. So, you know, we've really come a long way and I look forward to the future updates and really appreciate that the work that RAPS, deans, SACS, guidance counselors, climate and culture across the district and all of our support staff are doing to help support our students. I did have a question through the chair to administration during the take action component. And I love you guys. So with take action, our family notified through administration, I mean, through the chair to administration, our families notified whenever any of those actions are taken, like regardless, like, you know, hold, you know, all of those through the chair?
Through the chair. We feel it is important to convey to families and caregivers and parents about any of the actions that are called for under the protocol. So we've, within our communication protocols that we'll go over with parents, where we have suggested a line that would be added, a simple statement of what the action taken was and, you know, purpose of that action, what that what that action meant for students. Something we're continuing to work on and towards in terms of our communication to families.
Thank you. And I promise only a few more things. So as far as the I love you guys, do we get, do we, I really appreciated the pulsing that's going on, on all different things going on in the district around sense of belonging and things like that. Do we also pulse our staff and students for feedback around the I love you guys methods and the approaches around drills and preparedness through the chair to administration?
Through the chair. One of the primary means we use to ensure that schools are getting the trainings out to students and staff is through our drill data collector that we use. I know, and I know Dr. Lampkin had mentioned some of the data as well from the snapshot surveys that are done throughout the year that would certainly indicate the ideas of and perceptions of felt and perceptions of safety and security as well.
Thank you. And then lastly, this, I think, ties back in a little bit with my previous question around alternative programs. But I know it was mentioned, I believe, last school year, so 2020, it was on the timeline slide, that, you know, exclusionary programs were closed. So could we just have a quick review through the chair to administration of what those exclusionary programs that were closed and how students who may have needed an alternate setting are being placed now? And again, this may tie into the question that I'm asking for, for feedback around alternative programs, but maybe at least the answer around which programs were actually closed through the chair?
Through the chair. Those are not alternative programs. So those were, I'd refer to them as student supports. And specifically, that would be probably the turn it around program and the safety center. So during the 2023-24 school year, we made dramatic changes to the safety center programs and the turn it around program. Historically, the turnaround program had lasted five days. Students were sent out of their schools for five days. Last year, we limited that to two days. The safety center program, and when we did that as well at turnaround, that enabled us to allow our staff there to go into the elementary schools that were showing some needs to discuss some issues such as vaping and substance abuses. So they had that opportunity. With safety center, we we improved safety center by having safety center in two locations. We had one at the elementary level and we had one at the secondary level. That has historically been three days. We continued on with that. What we did last year with that is we added in an educational component. So we we implemented second step into that program last year, that that was the curriculum that they were utilizing in that program so that they had something really set that they were guided by in addition to accessing their academics. These were not suspensions at those times. These were programs, they were a step. During our budget cuts this year, those were cuts that were made in our staffing levels. So because of that, we we made strong efforts with our wellness rooms, for instance, at our middle schools, to have wellness people trained in those, to have the deans trained. They have access to second step. The SACS have had access to that. And we continue to address the various wellness concerns of substance use as well.
Great, thank you. That's really great to hear that that is still continuing in a variety of ways. And I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't give Burnco a shout out for the acknowledgement that they were recognized for the work that they're doing with Rise. And, you know, this starts even several years back when Mr. Foley was still there. I was really impressed with what the team at Burnco was doing when they were focusing on their ninth graders. In fact, I believe it was the make or break year, right? Was the book that you used. I went out and bought it myself and read it because I found it so interesting, what they were really doing to hone in on their ninth graders there and providing those supports from the start. I've heard great parent feedback from Burnco as well about some of the after-school homework supports and how that's benefited their child and really got them to have good study habits, but also really feel even more included in their school and school community. So again, thank you to everyone for the presentation tonight. We're a very large school district with a lot of students. We know that there are fights. We know that we have safety concerns and issues. And I just look forward to continuing to work with our administration and our staff to support our students and our staff in the best ways possible. So thank you.
Thank you. Member Neillman?
We, I don't remember what month. We had an executive session that kind of spelled out clearly, maybe through the chair to perhaps Brian Allen, that really showed us where we were at in the different buildings. And I'm suggesting I'd like to make a motion that we schedule that sometime soon so we could see on a more detailed level where we're at with some of that work. Is that reasonable through the chair?
I'm supporting that.
Through the chair, just for clarity, an update on where we are at? Is that, is that the ask?
Yes, with the physical, what do we call it? Physical security work ahead. And I.
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. I think there's actually an open item in finance operations and governance that might be an opportunity for us to share globally with the work that is going once completed in in a district basis, some of the work that we're encouraging. Clearly, we would not talk about site-specific progress, but.
I guess I'm, I guess. I'm sorry, you're struggling there. I guess I still think, though, that some awareness for us on the physical aspects of that building, when, through the chair, when did we have that meeting? It was an executive session, it was about the particular buildings. Nobody's remembered. Am I making this up?
So it was, so it was one year ago, this meeting, that Guidepost actually presented their recommendations to the full school committee. And it was, I think, shortly after the new school committee came on board. So maybe it was February that we briefly discussed plans within the executive session.
Okay. I can see that you're not going for it, but I think that there was value in that presentation for us to understand really how much work has, how much physical work has been done, how much is left to be done, you know, by quadrant, whatever, however you want to show it. So for your consideration, would the would the administration think about that? That's one item. On page 32, the risk ratios for the out-of-school suspensions. We have two years of data and we, you you explained to us that three is the critical number. This is a number that we, we're all paying attention to for a long time. So do you have prior data?
We do have data in relation to student discipline for the purpose of showing it through school day 50, then transition to different products for which our student information system is housed.
Yeah.
I didn't include it in this. It is available.
Okay.
But yes, and it's something that we continuously track over time. And I believe the intent is that having transitioned over to the new system, it will continue to be tracked from SY24 forward on the same, on the same visualization for leaders at the district level and at the school level. Sorry, through the chair.
And then through the chair, is that, does that help us further understand where we are now if we saw some of that, more of that prior data? Or or it's not apples and oranges, apples and apples?
Through the chair. Obviously, looking at historical trends, give a picture of where we had been at, given different practices in both what the districts' policies are, as well as in Massachusetts law. It would not necessarily be accurate to look at risk ratios prior to substantial changes in practice. At that point, it would be a different basis for the data. And it's also different groups of students moving through over time. Yeah.
Okay, I'm striking out so fast. Let's see. The surveys, I think the surveys are super interesting. And I'm curious if we have, if we know about other districts that are, that are implementing these kind of surveys or these pulse data or whatever we're calling them. And do we, do we ever incorporate goals attached to this? Or how do we, how do we know, like, I know we're headed up, that's the goal. I get that part. But are there, are there particular benchmarks, even with other communities or other people doing this through the chair? To whomever, I'm not sure.
In relation to data that's available through the chair, in relation to data that's available from other districts, the vendor that we use is called Panorama.
Yep.
They do provide data relative to other Panorama clients in terms of their national, they give us national percentiles and things like that, similar to how MCAS, the state, provides other percentiles and things like that for other schools in the state. The issue with comparing it to different national levels, though, is the way that different grade bands are defined by the, by the vendor can influence whether or not the comparisons are accurate. So for instance, in prior years, they have given us comparisons for the middle school level when they included our sixth-grade students as in comparison to other middle schools across the country, whereas that is not an accurate comparison. So what we often have to do is take the raw data that they provide for the district level and compare it to our own prior performance because those national comparisons aren't accurate.
Okay. I wonder, as these systems grow, if through the chair, if they, maybe data will improve like other systems. And the the last question I had is about the wellness rooms. And I love that you're capturing the data, the share about what's happening amongst the schools. And I'm curious, as the year's just started, but have we, through the chair, have we, have we made any changes in any schools based on what we've learned from this school or that school so far?
Through the chair, not major ones. We've changed a couple, not a couple of things, but we've implemented like a tracker at different schools so we can start tracking that data. And a lot of the new schools, like the middle schools, have been trying to use that with consistency to start the year.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Benanda?
Thank you. So the first thing I want to say is the policy JIC that we keep referring to has a very important clause in there, which definitely changes how we react to certain things that happen in schools. Let me just read it. So it's right here on the form you gave us. It says, "In every case of student misconduct for which suspension may be imposed, except for offenses referenced at the end of the policy." So the policy is very clear. Any offense that's a 37H or 37H and a half does not have to have the following things. Ways to reengage the student, avoid long-term suspension as a consequence and alternatives. Does not have to have that by the law. So I want, when we mention it and we say we're following a school committee rule, we need to mention that there are clear exceptions to that. Those clear exceptions are physical assault to a student or a staff member, drugs in schools, and weapons found on school grounds. So now I have your state report. It came to all superintendents and was posted on Friday. So we're talking that we could have disciplined students for certain offenses. We did not. So for all offenses, Worcester Public Schools, state report, 1,073 students were disciplined for all offenses. Out of those 1,073, how many received discipline for in-school suspension? 1.3%. How many experienced out-of-school suspension? Now, remember, I'm talking about all offenses here. Only 2.9% in harmony received emergency removals. So now let's go to the most serious offenses. Physical attack, there were three reported, 319 physical attacks in the Worcester Public Schools. What, what, what happened to those students? Point two received in-school suspension. Point nine received out-of-school and point two emergency removals. Talking about risk factors, it was very clearly said tonight that, you know, the levels were coming up with the three groups, students of color and students with disabilities. So reported physical attack in Worcester Public Schools last year, whites were 58, Latinos 189. That's more than three times as much. And students with disabilities, 141. Let's go to physical fights that occurred last year. 298 fights. How many students were disciplined for in-school? Point two. How many were disciplined for out-of-school? Point nine, point one emergency removals. Again, what's the risk factor? Forty-six students were white, 176 Hispanic. Forty-six students were white, one hundred seventy-six Hispanic Latino, and eighty-nine students with disabilities. Threat of physical attack, one hundred thirty-five students. Two percent in-house, three percent out-of-school suspension, no emergency removals. Again, risk factor, thirty white, seventy-three Hispanic, and fifty-eight students with disabilities. A great concern for the second year in a row, weapons found on school premises. Zero reported. Last year, zero reported. Now, when we get phone calls from parents, and they're telling us, different parents, and I guess that Ann Bureau reports, they are saying they're concerned about safety in schools. Staff members are calling, especially in the last couple of weeks, saying that they are afraid in their schools. There are constant fights, children that fight, they see them back, they are walking the car, it is. Restorative justice is not walk, is not working in all schools, and staff continue to get injured, teachers do not come to school to break up fights. And talking, going on what Committee Member McCullough was asking about alternative programs. So my information, and it may not be true, maybe you can clarify, is that principals have asked for students to go to Challenge and Reach program. However, it's been very difficult this year to get students that need a separate placement in. At this point, I believe Challenge and Reach, which is a program that used to have many students in it, has seventeen students and fourteen staff. Is that correct? Through the chair, is that correct?
Through the chair, I can check that right now.
Okay, thank you. Number two, in the budget conversations with the collaborative, is it also true that there is discussions that we'll be closing the Woodward Day program for our next fiscal year?
Through the chair, I'm not sure where you're getting your information from, Member Benanda, but we have, right now, I think, four children that are currently at the collaborative. Is that, is that accurate, four, maybe? Yes.
Yes.
We have a very small number, it's definitely no, it's definitely not in the double digits, and so we are not making decisions at this very moment about what will happen for budget, it's too early in the school year to decide that.
Okay, thank you very much. Another question I have is, I've been told by school adjustment counselors that they're being asked to pick up the responsibilities of the BCBA's who were cut, and they feel they have different skills and unable to do the job that the BCA, BCBA's done. For those students that have emotional challenges, the BCBA's were very helpful. So what is the district doing for all those students that were receiving service for aggression or being upset with the BCBA's being cut? Through the chair.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, so as you know, Member Benanda, any BCBA in the district last school year and previous years was only working with children with special needs, those services continued to be provided.
Through the chair, that is correct. So students in your behavior-disordered classrooms, they did have access to BCBA's, not all of them have that access anymore. So again, who is working with the students that initially had that on their grid?
Through the chair, any student that has that on their IEP is still receiving services.
And finally, students are coming to teachers. They're asking their teachers now, why disruptive students are allowed to ruin their learning? They also said, who is caring about us? And I think that's a very good question. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I'm curious, is there a policy recommendation that you're seeking, Member Benanda?
I think the policy is already clear. The policy states that students that are involved in fights where other children are hurt or staff members are hurt, students that bring the weapons to school, the ones that aren't reported, but bring the weapons to school, those students do need to, we need to follow, you know, the policy said those students can be suspended. Also, I looked at the number of days, that was also in the report that we all received, the number of student days missed for suspensions, and the majority of those days missed are three to five days. So students that are really committing very serious concerning discipline issues, the majority of them are only receiving three to five days, if that. So I don't know if I'm saying, it's not a policy change, the policy is there for those incidences, that are thirty-seven H and thirty-seven H and a half, those students can be suspended, and long-term suspended for those disciplines.
So through the chair, just for clarity, the data that you reported was from last school year, and we actually have some information that we can share, that we did speak with Desi, I'll turn it over to the team momentarily, but I do want to be very clear. When I arrived in Worcester Public Schools, there was a practice of suspending children for extreme amounts of time. When I arrived, there were three hundred and seventy-nine children that we had long-term suspended out of our schools. That's if we average about eleven thousand children in the seventh through twelfth grade, that's three percent of our children that we said, you may no longer be educated by Worcester Public Schools, we will send you somewhere else. That is, and those are the same children that then, when I arrived, were emailing me, I didn't know these children, emailing me and requesting to please give me another chance, I want to come back, I want to earn my diploma, I want to make better choices. Children I knew nothing about, and, and I just can't imagine that there was three percent of our children that we said could not be educated by our school district. That's a lot of children, and I believe personally, that morally, it's our responsibility to do everything we possibly can to educate them within our walls, not send them to someone else. Now, if, if indeed, they need something else because that's what their need shows, then that's what we do, but that's not three percent of the population, that's about one percent, which is where we're at now. So it is, it is very much the responsibility of the educators, it's our moral responsibility to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our children. When a child misbehaves, thirteen years old, fifteen years old, instead of us saying, you don't belong here, we're going to send you somewhere else because you're not valuable to us, I stop and I say to myself, what has happened in that child's thirteen years of life that leads them to behave this way? In their fifteen years of life, and then what are we going to do about it? Because we are the professionals, and I believe in the educators that we have and what they can do. I will not just send children out because someone says that restorative justice doesn't work, when indeed, we know that the research shows over and over and over again that it absolutely does. Is it perfect? No, it is not. But to send a child somewhere else and send them to the streets is a travesty. And I'm going to close with my final thing. Within my first month of being the superintendent here, I had to attend a funeral, I had to attend a memorial of a group of children that were thirteen years old, fifteen years old, who we had said, you don't get to be with your peers, we're sending you off into an alternative setting. And one of those children died, and other children in that car have permanent damage. And you know what is the most amazing part of it? The individual who pulled the children out of the car and saved their lives was another child that we had sent to an alternative setting when they were much younger. That child is a young adult now. That child can't get himself on track. I have reached out to him multiple times, but yet, he was the one person who saved these children. I, I, I can't be a superintendent who says that one child's life is more important than another. We are implementing the policies here. Children make mistakes, we are disciplining them for their mistakes, we are suspending children appropriately, we are taking children and doing what we need to do with them, but I will not be a superintendent that throws children away, not one single child. With that, I'm going to have the team respond to what Desi has shared.
Dr. Who's up?
Through the chair, I'd also just like to provide some clarification regarding the 2023, 2024 Student Discipline Data Report from Desi. There are three points I'd like to make. The first is that, just for clarity, the percentage of students, so for those who don't see it right now, and unfortunately, the website is currently under maintenance, which is really unfortunate, it lists the number of students total in the district, the students disciplined, and then it has percentages for in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, and then it has a drop-down menu for all offenses, and then you can break it down by offense type. The percentages within that, whenever it's broken down by offense type, is not the percentage of entire offenses that have received an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension, it's the percentage of the student body committing that offense who then received that disciplinary resolution. So for instance, if it was for, let me pull up an example here, for illegal substances, for instance, one of the drop-down items, if it was one percent of out-of-school suspension, that would be one percent of all of the student body received an out-of-school suspension for illegal substances. Point two is that the way Desi calculates these numbers, it is possible for there to be instances and not show up on the dashboard itself. The reason for that is if there are so few instances relative to the entire student body, it rounds down to zero. So if there's a percent of instances where it's between zero point zero and zero point zero five, that gets rounded down, even though those instances are still recorded by the district, submitted to Desi, and appear on Desi's log. And lastly, I just want to clarify too, when we were talking about risk ratios in part of the presentation, that word was used to describe the different rates of student discipline. I just want to clarify, the reason that there are higher rates of students disciplined from different racial and ethnic groups has to be interpreted in light of the fact that those groups make up different proportions of the student body, and that's what the risk ratio is counter for, is the fact that those groups make up different proportions, so looking at the raw numbers alone isn't an accurate comparison to the other student groups. Thank you.
Dr. Collins?
Through the chair, to answer the numbers of students at Challenge and Reach, Challenge and Reach current enrollment is at forty-eight, and for the long-term suspended students at Woodward Day School, as of today, it's eight students.
Member Benanda?
So, I'm just back to the superintendent's comments, when she did arrive here, we had a hundred twenty students at Woodward Day, and everybody always got their education. So we in the Worcester Public Schools never, never, did not give an education to students. As a matter of fact, students would ask to stay at Woodward Day after their term there because they liked the small classes and the small personal relationships that they established. So in the Worcester Public Schools, we have always met the needs of the kids that went to alternative programs. Never were they not met, and those kids did graduate and get credits. As far as the offense, the unfortunate incident that happened while you were here, I know all those students also, and the fact they went to the alternative school was, was not a reason for what happened with the future of those students. As a matter of fact, they looked at the principal of the alternative school and the students as their father and their mothers. So nice story, but not exactly correct. So, and also, thank you for your clarification on that. Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Thank you to the chair, to the administration, I have a few things. First, thanks for the report. When I first read it, I was looking for a little bit more, but after this great presentation and kind of listened to you guys wrap things up, I think you actually answered many of my questions that I had, and some of the concerns that I, I had. I think I kind of also misunderstood the Q-teams situation, when, when, when you guys rolled out the Q-teams and talked about it all the time, I kind of took it in an academic, academic context, that, you know, Q-teams go into the schools to kind of help kids academically and support them that way, not understanding that that's also done, Q-teams are also done to go and help schools out with the climate and, and culture. So with that, can someone just, through the chair, to the administration, just kind of talk about the Q-teams that are put together to go in to help support our, our schools during the day when, when needed, when they need added support?
Through the chair, for, so every quadrant has on, out of the Culture and Climate Department, we'll say, two Culture and Climate coaches. So they kind of go into schools or classrooms and help out with like tier one, tier one supports for those classrooms, and then borderline tier two, and then work with our sped Q-team members to further that support if needed. So it kind of works with maybe just a student in that classroom, but it also might be the classroom itself, where they would go in and help coach the class, the teacher, or the, or the student, or provide strategies to help reshape those behaviors that they might see in that classroom or at that student.
And part of that, from administration, who is part of that Q-team that goes in to do those added supports at, at those schools?
Sure, the Culture and Climate coaches, as we call them.
Yeah.
And then we have our sped coaches also, that are working with schools and teachers and all that good stuff.
Okay.
And I think too, to what Mr. Tony was saying, our, our Q-teams work to deepen and help implement the structures in some of our buildings that need work, they provide an outside lens to what's going on in schools, and really help to support our principals, our administrators, and our teachers, and really providing more positive structures to support our students and their buildings.
Thank you. And through the chair, can someone just give me the breakdown on what actual trainings did the Climate and Culture staff and the Dean of Students go through this year to prepare for this year? We had talked about that leading into this year in regards to different trainings that they were received. Can we just get a breakdown on what those trainings were, please? Through the chair.
Sure, through the chair. So to start with the Deans, I meet with the Deans every Thursday, except the first Thursday when they have principal meetings. So we have our own academy where I'm working with them through different situations that they have at the schools, or ones that are, what we do is scenario-based, kind of talking through each other, and then talking about different issues that they might have at the schools and working through, with each other. Some of their, their training we had in the beginning was de-escalation language training that was provided by some of our CPI trainers, and then where, where in January, January, yeah, the ninth, Open Sky is going to have a vaping training for our Culture and Climate coaches and then our Deans. For our Culture and Climate Specialists, we also had that de-escalation language training for them, and Desi is now providing a online self-paced, yeah, training in de-escalation and restraint that is done through Desi, so they will be completing that moment, in the, in the next couple of weeks of school. And then, further that, in the beginning of the school year too, we really focused on those individuals building that relationship and that, sort of, building that relationship with the school through routines and procedures at those schools, through, between our Deans and our Culture and Climate Assistants.
In what we know now, and kind of what we're dealing with, and, and what we're dealing with within school, with, in schools now with, with our students, is there any additional training or anything that you think our Climate and Culture staff or the Dean of Students may need in the future?
Yes, so we're currently looking at different trainings for them that have to deal with peer mediation and restorative conversations. So we're in the, we're in the, in the working of finding some type, not some type, a consultant, I guess we can call it, to come in and help train those individuals in that peer mediation part of it and restorative practices.
Okay, thank you. Through, through the chair to administration, and I'm not sure if, I figured the gentleman named from Burnco, if he could kind of answer this question for me. Just in regards to the Dean, the day, and the day-to-day activities, we kind of heard from Denny, but in regards to the systems in place, in regards to supporting the staff and making sure that the school is secure, I know there's supposed to be some type of rotation and those, can we talk, can maybe you, he get up and, I forget your name, I'm so sorry, and kind of talk about what the day-to-day operations at Burnco might look like in regards to Climate and Culture?
Through the chair, Vice Chairman Johnson, I just want to make sure that I fully understand the question and what you're looking for.
So kind of what, what have you set, what is set up in Burnco? Well, you're Climate and Culture, right? We have, they kind of help support, they walk around the school making sure kids are, what does that look like? How do you set up that rotation? What are they doing? Like, how does that look in, in the school on a day-to-day basis, is what I'm looking for?
So through the chair, so we have them strategically placed around the building in, you know, different zones that we might know, might have more foot traffic than others to make sure that students are aware that they're there, and also for students to, you know, to deter students in a way that's not necessarily like, I got you moment, it's more of an encouragement back to class. For those situations where we have students that need to be removed from class, most of the times, our Climate and Culture students are the first to respond. Thinking of one story off the top of my head, one of our Climate and Culture Specialists was responding to remove a student from a classroom. Another admin went to go in, I just kind of let the admin go in, and this Climate and Culture relationship, had a relationship with the student, and this student had experienced traumatic events at home beyond what most of us could imagine here. And instead of it becoming a disciplinary interaction with an administrator, our Climate and Culture Assistant was able to take the student out into the hall, remove them for class for a short period of time, and give them the space to be heard and to kind of settle down so they could re-enter class. So that's a lot of the interaction that they're doing on a day basis. We have them in lunchrooms, interacting with students, greeting students when they enter the building. We have them placed around the building at dismissal to say goodbye to our students on the way out. You know, near the bathrooms, the support if needed, so there, you know, our eyes and ears throughout the building consistently.
Thank you. And I, and we have spoken before, and I believe you said some things to me in the past, you've been at Burnco for a while, and we implemented the Climate and Culture and the Dean of Students. What would you say the addition of Climate and Culture and the Dean of Students has done to Burnco?
So I think, through the chair, sorry, I think that the addition of this has allowed students to feel supported and safe and to build more relationships with, with trusting adults. I think from an administrative standpoint, a lot of, it gets tricky building really strong relationships with, with students at times because, like it or not, a lot of students see us and the Assistant Principals as, as discipline, as consequences. And the Climate and Culture are not that. You know, sure, they, they report to me and they work for us, but they're that, that olive branch to the student, they're the student's voice, they're hearing what the student's saying. And I think even the little things of administration not having to respond to every single student removal, first disruption of class, has allowed our team at Burnco to do what we do best, and that's be instructional leaders inside the classroom. And if you look through at our walkthrough data over the past year, I mean, our walkthrough data is significantly up. We saw, Burnco High School had the largest gains of any high school or secondary school for MCAS last year. So, you know, this has really allowed us to, to help and support our department heads and our teachers and be more visible in classrooms to make significant academic gains for our students.
Thank you. Okay, next question. Actually-
Do you mind if I briefly add to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I think that having Climate and Culture-
Can you identify yourself, so we know?
Sorry, Joe Ewick, Principal at Burnco High School. I think having Climate and Culture Specialists in the building allows for everyone to have their roles well-defined and allow everyone to be a little bit more focused through the chair. Ultimately, what's happening is, to Mr. Falcoochie's point, teachers can be teachers better. They can focus on instruction more, they can create and design lessons that are engaging and challenging to students. Climate and Culture can create the relationships to keep students in class more. So I think really well-defined roles where people are focused and what their responsibilities are is really, really essential to the improvements that are happening here.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate that. I don't, I don't know if Member McCullough made the motion, but I want to make a motion in regards to the wellness room, and we talked about gathering data on that. Just like to make a motion to get that back towards the end of the school year on kind of what that data looks like. So I would like to put that into a motion. Mr. Chair? One thing I did notice about this report, which is a little concerning to me, is the emergency removals in our elementary schools. Those seem to, they went up. And actually, after last night's thing, I was talking to a few principals on the elementary school level, and they, they kind of talked about this school year, for some reason, they noticed a lot of dysregulation with their students when they came back to school, and it kind of took them a while to start to settle things down. And then when I saw the number of emergency removals or whatever, I'm just, I'm just wondering, on the elementary school level, I mean, what, what does that look like when kids on the elementary school level are being removed on an emergency basis? Like, what does that look like? Through the chair.
Dr. Collins?
Through the chair, I think there's an important part about emergency removals to remember, is those are only used in real emergencies where a parent can't be contacted, they can't come in. So it's an emergent situation that, in which you might be considering suspension, or you need time to figure out what's happened. At the elementary level, typically it's an acting-out student, you can't figure out what's going on. I think that's what the principals were expressing to you, is that, you know, students will come in and you can't figure out what's happening with this child. So when they're physically acting out and you cannot get them to calm down, and they're unsafe at that point to be in the building, that's when that's utilized. And I think that's why you see that correlation of the emergency removals.
Okay, that makes sense. And that actually makes sense in the context of kind of what I see on a day-to-day basis as a social worker, getting phone calls all the time on kids needing to be picked up and, and all these other things. And again, I don't know what the answer to, to that is. You know, you know, my last comment, Mr. Chair, to the chair, to the administration and to everyone in this room is, I mean, Madam Superintendent's done a great job, she's come in here, she's continued to try to do the work that, that she's trying to do and do it well. To Member Benender, previous superintendent or whatever, this isn't a back and forth here, Mr. Mayor, on who did a better job, or who's doing something better, who was suspended more, less, or whatever. I mean, these are kids we're talking about here, that we're trying to educate in, in those kinds of things. We can't do this back and forth. I mean, we have to be better. We have to be better as a district, as a collective school committee body, to continue to support our educators, support the superintendent, support the administration, support our students, support everyone out there that's trying to do the things to, to make our kids better. I keep getting up and having this conversation every couple of months when, when this safety and climate stuff come up. Again, we, we have issues. I mean, these are kids, I mean, they're dysregulated, we have a lot of mental health stuff going on. And I'm going to tell you, if, if you, and I talk to Member Mailman about this all the time, because I'm in a different realm that she's in, right? She would say, you, you probably know this better than I do. If you're not in it and you're not seeing it every day, as I do as a social worker every day, and what's going on with these kids, I mean, you got kids bouncing around from foster homes, being taken away, abused, neglected, all these other things. And again, like, we, we want to support them in school and provide them the education that they have, because some of these kids don't have that support and stuff outside of school to be able to make it to school every day. So you want to keep them in school as much as you can. I mean, suspending them for long periods of time and things like that is always not the answer. Do they happen? Yes, they do. Kids are suspended, they're suspended for three days, five days, 10 days, long day, long-term suspended, it always happens. But that's not always the answer. There's a lot of things going on, the world's changing, things are getting different here. I mean, a lot of difficult kids that we're dealing with, we need to try to support them and, and support them as much as we can with the tools that we have. We're all adults here, you're an educator, there's a lot of educators here. We could think of different things, and we could come together as a body, and educators and everything, to support our students in school without looking at punitive ways to hurt them and damage them and have long-term lasting effects on what they could, what they could be. We all talk about, oh, we, you know, different pathways to your career and this and that. Well, we can't get there if you're suspending kids all the time. We can't get there if kids are never in school. We have to be able to support this. And we can't go back and forth, I, I can't, I can't take this, we can't go back and forth on who did what or whatever. Madam Superintendent, it's a superintendent now, she's doing the job that we need her to do. This is why we brought her in here, we need to support her in doing the job that she needs to do, and support this administration, support our educators or whatever. And again, if there's issues out there, we hear about them all the time, we address it, I make my phone calls to get those things addressed. We're not turning a blind eye to things here. We're making sure if kids need to be disciplined, they're going to be disciplined. If they're not, and I hear about it, I call Madam Superintendent, say, listen, what's going on here? No one's trying to say kids should never be disciplined, but we need to be able to do it in a productive way and the right way moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have Member Benkeria.
I think I decided it's beneficial to listen to what everyone has to say. Before I get up, usually I raise my hand.
You raise your hand.
Yes, sooner than later. But I do have some questions that were to ask, so that's what I'm going to be working on here. When we are looking at high schools and middle schools, and we have students that are going into the wellness rooms, how are we tracking that? So if a student is going in on a Monday, a Wednesday, or a Friday, what are we doing to ensure that we are not only providing services, but checking on the number of times that they're in this room?
Mr. Tony?
Yep, through the chair, the wellness tracker, it's entered every time that student enters into the room. So every time that student enters into a room, the wellness room instructor, or possibly the Dean or another staff member, will fill out the form to, for that kid to enter that room.
So if I'm there as a student and I'm in the wellness room five times in a period of two weeks, is that looked at differently?
Yes, the Deans and I, when we are in our academies, we are focusing on them paying attention to that, that data, and then working with them to see if it is like period two math class that they're coming out of, or how that, whatever that cause is for them to go into that room. And they're trying to work with the school to help support that student on either still maintaining, I mean, still maintain, still be in that classroom that they might be leaving, or anything else that would come up.
So, I'm going to make a motion that in January, we received some, some data in reference to, one, the number of times students are actually in the wellness room, and then the other would be some examples of the purpose of why they're there. So we get that in January.
Member Johnson, I think just made the same thing, but that's fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it, to be honest with you. Okay.
Well, makes sense.
That's it.
Member Johnson asked for a report, so I'll take his motion, but go ahead.
Okay. I just want to make sure we know that we received the data at some point. I'm not sure if included data.
Yeah, you said data at the end of the school year, so we can look for a whole year together.
Okay, but I'm looking for January, because I feel as though if we want to stop making progress and we want to stop making any changes, we can look at what January is prior to the budget, is why I'm asking.
Which November now.
So that gives, right, so that gives them a couple of more months, December, October, November, December, January.
Is it going to show anything?
But we want to be able to supply what they need, and the only way we can do that is if we know prior to budget. So if we wait till school year ends, we don't have any way of looking at it. It's just some data, right? I'm sure it's not going to be that difficult to get that.
Okay, we'll ask for it later on, go ahead.
Okay. When you have, and I want to say it's page 11, but I'm not sure, in the emergency and you take action, you talk about what you're doing when you have certain protocols that take place. So in an emergency and take action, there's hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, shelter. And it talks about, each time when you read this, it says that you want to lock your door, your classroom door. From what I understood, all the classroom doors were supposed to be locked at all times while they're in active classroom. Is that correct? Through the chair to administration.
Through the chair, that is what we have on this protocol, correct?
I'm sorry?
That is the protocol.
Okay, so that is the protocol. If that's the protocol, are we ensuring that all of our classroom doors lock?
So the classroom locks across the district are going to be addressed. They are a work in progress.
So they're a work in progress, so we're not sure, correct?
So-
Dr. Morris, I could respond to that. Through the chair, Member Benkeria, just a reminder, that's actually one of the goals for the superintendent, is to have all of our doors fixed by the end of the school year in terms of locks. So it is, when Dr. Morris said it's a work in progress, that is what's happening this year. At the end of this school year, that is the goal. And that's on my evaluation.
Okay, sounds good to me. Physical work ahead. And I know we discussed this in Finance and Operations. We talked about what we were going to be working on, what we weren't going to be working on, what the priorities were, what was advisable to ensure that certain things were done. So when we're looking at exterior doors in selected schools, we're also looking at the locks and the door hardware. So even though we have looked at what we want to accomplish, what the superintendent's goals are, this evening it was stated that we were working on 12 schools. So I'm just trying to figure out how, if we only chose 12 schools to work on, how can we get to what, where we want to be by June?
Thank you. Through the chair, this is going to be a multi-phase, multi-year project that we have begun. Obviously, we see plenty of needs as we look at the data from the audit, and we've used the audit, and we'll continue to use the audit to prioritize doors, looking at and examining door condition, examining door locks, and to proceed from there based on absolute need. But this will be a multi-year process.
Okay. So as we're looking at a multi-year process, the dollars that are allotted for the planned projects, do we know the dollar amount that we're going to use? And I know we put in the budget, what I'm saying is, did we get to that point, and are we breaking it down?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, so we've taken the Guidepost report, which I think all of you have seen, which identifies all the recommendations by site. So we've converted that internally to look at all of the recommendations in total. So we know there's 166 total recommendations that Guidepost has made. In FY '24, we increased the budget from $125,000 for school safety to $1.4 million in anticipation of the Guidepost- of the Guidepost recommendations. Despite the FY '25 budget gap of $22 million, we did not reduce our school safety budget. So the budget recommendation that we will present to the school committee in FY '26 will reflect the priorities that we'll be addressing during the FY '26 school year.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Allen. That was something I discussed for a number of months, so that's why I'm asking these questions. How does our safety audit relate to what we are working on when we talk about SAFE? And that is the collaborative team that is put together. I'm a little curious on how all that weaves together because it says, continue vision and mission discussion, mission and vision. Shouldn't we be coordinating and having the same mission? I'm a little taken back by that, but certainly open to hear what you have.
And Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So the, the mission and vision is just of that group, not of the district, right? So if that's what your question is, because of course, we have a mission and vision as a district. What is this, what is SAFE going to work on accomplishing so that people are clear when they come together? They come together four times a year. We want them to be tight on how we're moving the district and in this area of, of safety, both physical safety and the felt safety. So don't, don't want you to think that we're creating a whole new mission for the whole district. No, absolutely not, just for this group.
At some point, this all weaves together, so we're on all of the same page is the point I'm trying to get across here, because if we, we have an audit that we paid tremendous amount of money for, almost half a million dollars, and then we're looking at the SAFE group, the collaborative team. And I get that, that I don't have a problem with having the team. I'm just trying to ensure that we're all on the same page, that we're all looking at the physical and in the safety portion of what we want to do with our buildings, and they're only meeting four times a year. So I say that with the clarif, so I need a little clarification on if they're meeting four times a year, do we actually get an update from what they're looking to do?
So, so to be just crystal clear, the, the portion of, so SAFE has two portions to it. It has the felt safety and the physical safety. The felt safety is led by Mr. Tony. The physical safety is led by Dr. Morris. Dr. Morris is using the safety audit as the guide for the conversations in the physical safety. So that's, that's step one. And then when I say that the big group is meeting quarterly, it is. This next time they meet, they're then going to go into subgroups or subcommittees, which will then meet more frequently. But the work of this team is really to be an extra set of eyes and ears to tell us how things are going and so that we can make those appropriate adjustments along the way as a district, both in the area of physical and felt safety, because there is so much personal experience related to both areas. So I hope that gives more clarity.
Yes, it does. Because my concern is, I understand the felt part of it, but the physical part doesn't change. A window's a window, a door is a door.
Exactly.
And that's my concern is I want to see that being taken care of also. The felt can be a different opinion, a different outlook, a different team putting something together, but what is what. So as we move on to school-based reports and practices, we talk about the wellness room, and it seems that people are going in and out of it, and I'm talking staff members. Who actually is supervising this room? Who's in charge of that room?
Through the chair, there's nobody going in and out of those rooms for staff. The dean oversees that wellness room instructor, who is the one who's responsible for the activities that are going in the room. And they do a good collaboration with the dean and the culture and climate assistants to help manage that room and like the, in and out of the students who are sent to that room.
So someone is there from the time we start our morning till the time we close?
That is correct.
And if they don't have a student all day?
If they don't, well, that would be up to the school to utilize them in a, in a manner. I don't want to misspeak, but I believe there's somebody using that room probably all the time during the day.
So you're telling me that we have, pretty much have a student in that room from the time we open till the time we close?
Maybe not the time we open, but for most of the day, I would say.
Most of the day, there is a student in that room. Generally, what would you say was the time period that they were in that room? We'll say, on an average, what would you say was the timeframe a student is in that wellness room?
I'd probably have to get back to you on that, but we say from like an hour after school started to the last period of the day.
Okay. So if I have an issue as a student and I'm taken out of a classroom, I'm generally in the wellness room for more than two to three hours? Am I understanding that correctly or not?
No, no, definitely not. There's a limit to the wellness room, which is 30 minutes.
30 minutes.
For, and I think what you're getting at as a discipline in every situation, so it's no more than 30 minutes.
It's no more than 30 minutes.
Say that again?
It's no more than 30 minutes.
No more than 30 minutes unless they, they're possibly in there for in-house.
For what?
In-house.
Okay.
Member Biancheria, let me give you an example of what I just saw. On Monday of this week, I was at a middle school, and we walked into the wellness room. It was lunchtime. There was one young man sitting on a beanbag having lunch. Didn't look like it was disciplinary at all. I think maybe just wanted a quiet space. There was another young lady who was having, we'll call it a 13-year-old meltdown, crying. She doesn't like the food, all these kind of things. The, the instructor was there talking with her. You could tell that they knew each other. Then in came the climate and culture assistant, who actually had been assigned to this young lady. The school had identified about 10 students who they say are, just need a little bit extra. They don't need a SAC support, but they need more because otherwise they're disruptive to the classroom. They call them 1.5s right now. They're trying to bring them back into the school setting, so they've assigned one of the climate and culture assistants to really work directly with these 10 children. And so she came and got her because that was part of what she does, and she was taking her down to the lunchroom. This young lady has some challenges with some social anxiety, and so she would talk with her as she's entering the lunchroom, getting her lunch. She does that kind of work with this young lady as she's entering some of the classrooms as well. So it's just this space that, there's not a lot of children in there. I've never seen massive numbers in any wellness room I've gone into, but that just gives you a picture. And I was in that room for maybe about seven minutes. Mr. Foley was with me. That's about the amount of time, right? Maybe not even that.
So four of our middle schools have a wellness room and five of our high schools do, correct?
Correct.
So we have nine people, staff members, nine staff members, that are in these rooms all day long. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And if they don't have a student, they are utilized by the principal or the dean? How does that work?
We'd have to get, that would be up to the principal. I couldn't speak on that because I'm not in, they're in charge of that staff member.
Okay. 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 Guess we'll, we'll look further into it as far as that goes. When we look at cuts, I just want to just say that I, I get what we're doing. Some of it I agree with, some of it I'm not quite sure of, some I'm still learning about. But it does concern me, and I know we made the budget cuts with the safety center and the turnaround program, but I don't want to see everything disappear that is a strategy to help our kids. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they would not be educated, because reality is there are still students, and there'll always be students that can't stay in a comprehensive high school, can't stay in an environment where there's 1,400 kids in a building. And sometimes they need to have that smaller classroom to not only learn, but to adjust and make progress and be successful in their own lives. So I certainly look forward to what we plan on doing as we progress and look at the data from the wellness rooms and what we're going to be doing with students that need that help. You talked about a lot of training for the culture and climate staff, and what was in the beginning, and it appears, am I correct, in that there will be training for the staff members throughout the year on different, in different areas?
Mr. Tony?
Yes, through the chair, that is correct.
So each time that they are looking at the situation, are they, are we taking them out of the, all of the schools for a day, two days? How's that working?
No, we're looking to do it in a manner so we're not taking them all out at once.
So then we would have so many in each of our schools, and we're taking and we're splitting up the training, so some are getting some type of training, others are getting the remaining training? Or is it split up where they were all getting the same training within a shot window, like say a week? So Monday, Tuesday, this group goes, Group A goes, Wednesday, Thursday, Group B goes? So they're all at the same level by Monday of the next week is why I'm asking.
Through the chair, yes, that would be correct.
So that is how it's working?
Yes.
And most of the time, the training that they're receiving is not something that is from outside, it's inside?
Through the chair, both, as I mentioned before, they're doing a DESI training on de-escalation and.
I forget the other one.
Building, building relationships. So that is a self-paced modular that DESI provided, so that would be online. And then we do some of the de-escalation language training within, in-house, because we have several people trained in that area.
Okay. And which, which tracking that is the dean of schools for these staff members?
Say that again, and I'll follow it up.
Who's training? The training is, what, who's tracking the training when it's online?
Mr. Tony?
Yes, that, that would be the deans when they're on their own. They're going to allow them time to do these modules during the day.
Okay. So they would do it during school time, it wouldn't be after?
Correct.
Okay. Give me a second here. Some of these questions that you asked for the first time is, I'll make a motion that we receive an example of the survey that was sent to the kids. I'm very curious on what we actually sent out to our students, because when I read this and I saw elementary, middle, and high, just wondering how their, the fourth grade is, are adjusting to answering the questions? Because some of them can be very direct, some of them can be very worldly. Excuse me. But the middle and high school, I clearly understand they can take a survey, they can sit there, they can read this. If they're not comprehending it, they have someone to ask. Elementary, I'm not sure if we're, at fourth grade, I kind of feel leery because I still look at them as, that's really young. So not that I'm saying they can't take it, I just want to make sure they have enough guidance on it.
Yeah, through the chair, we will, are you okay if we provide that in a Friday update?
Sure.
Okay, so we'll do that in the next two weeks.
If we get a sample of what the survey was, so we know what the, what they're actually being asked.
Sure.
Almost done.
I was just going to ask you.
Yep, wrapping it up. Actually, I'm shorter than usual here. Okay, so when we look at the purpose of the changes for the 37H and the laws and so on, we're always looking to continue the educational piece. So if we are ensuring that we are doing that, when we look at kids who are going into the wellness room, kids that may have short-term, long-term suspension, we have a tracking of that. What are we tracking for the victim of the circumstances? How are we handling this through the, through the administration? What are we doing? Because the automatic reaction of the victim is, I'm fine, I don't need anything, I'm okay. And that concerns me because I don't think kids are going to look at this and say, I may need some help. So how do we backtrack to make sure that the people that are affected by what occurred, you want to call it a disruption, an incident, an issue, whatever, how are we ensuring that our victims are getting the help that they need?
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, through the chair, very, very good question. I think there's, there tends to be a misunderstanding or misperception, I think, when we talk about restoring the child back into the classroom setting, that that means that they just go back in and we don't do anything with it. And actually, when, as part of the disciplinary practice and restorative justice, the, the person who did the harm has to mend the harm with the person that they did the harm to. And so that is part of the work of the restorative practices, is mending that relationship between, using your words, the victim and then the one who, the, the person who did it. I'm not going to say that the district is perfect in that because it's not an easy process and we're all growing in it, but that is what restorative practices is about, is mending the relationships between the two. And so we're going to keep getting better at that. And to your question on do we track how the victim is doing, I don't know if I can say that we have a formal tracking of that. I would say that I know just because I've interacted enough with our, our SACs and our principals and our deans and our teachers, that they care so deeply about the children that they're watching how children are doing and they're checking in on kids. But to say that we have a formal tracking of it at this time, that would, that would not be an accurate statement to you. So possibly something we can look at. I'm not exactly sure how we would do that at a district, in a district as large as ours, but it's something we can investigate.
Good. I would make a motion that at some point, we come up with a way to track the progress of the person who was involved in that, who was the victim, however you want to word it. But I, my concern is that gets, that gets lost sometimes in all the shuffle of what occurred. And at some point, that will have an effect and they're going to remember that. And I'm just trying to walk through this as best as possible when we have different resolutions that we're working on, and whether it's proportionate to ensuring that all our kids are safe when they are in school. Lastly, I, curious, and I did bring this up to the mayor earlier today, on this report, there isn't anything to do with weapons. Is it possible that we can get an update on what has occurred over the first 50 days of school or how you want to work it, if you want to extend it until December? But what evidence is, is out there? What is happening? What's going on? There are multiple things that have occurred in our schools over the first 50 days. So in order for us to be able to have a conversation with the parents we hear from or staff members and so on, it's nice to have the three-quarters of the picture. We're never going to get the whole picture. So, but the weapon portion of this, I think, is important. We are a public school. We need to be transparent as much as possible when we talk about discipline, suspensions, infractions. So I would certainly appreciate an update on how that actually has worked. And that can, like I said, that can go until December if that works best, but we certainly do need an update on it. Thank you. an update on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dr. Lampy?
I just have one point of clarification too, just for the release of the questions for the survey, we will have to check whether or not they're proprietary, in which case I think it would just have to be through executive session or something like that, that they can be viewed. I just don't know if they can be made public record based on our contract with the vendor.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry. So through the chair, so if indeed we cannot release them, I'll put something into what's happening on that. So as soon as we know, I will inform you whether we can or we can't, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be very brief because all of my questions now have been answered, including the last question I had through the presentation, as well as questions that came from my colleagues. But I just want to say, I appreciate the report, I'm very happy with the progress we've made with climate and culture and as well as safety. I know there have been some really concentrated efforts by the superintendent and her team. And I want to thank the team from Burnco because hearing the day-to-day work really gives us a good perspective on what's going on, on our progress. I also want to remember, I want to echo Member McCullough's statement on clarity, transparency, on safety, and discipline, because although we are working hard on this initiative, we're not perfect, and we need to continue to work to make our schools as safe as possible. So I just will reiterate a question that was just mentioned, you know, there are regarding categories, there's physical assault, fighting, disruption of schools, possession of drugs, alcohol. But I didn't see anything on weapons either, and I didn't know if it fell under a category that we had, and we just didn't know, and maybe I missed it, but I would appreciate those numbers. And if there are none reported, I think that would help us, that had a category with a zero reported for the entire perspective to the community and the public. So through the chair, that's one thing that I would have as well. So I just wanted to echo that.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, we can absolutely get you those numbers, the actual numbers of incidents, because as was stated, because the number of incidents are so small when we report to DESI, percentage-wise, it becomes a zero. So we'll get you that through whatever day we report it, we can get you that. I want to clarify because I've been asked a few times, have we had a gun on campus this school year? We have not had a gun on campus this school year. What we have had, what are they called, airsoft? Airsoft guns. So if you show a quick video of, you know, something that a student does and why children do this, none of us will really understand, but there are videos out there that if you first look at it, it absolutely looks like a gun. They, we have investigated them and we've included law enforcement, there have been zero guns on campus, they have been air, what are they called again? Airsoft. I think of them as BB guns, so I'm aging myself. So I just really want to put that out there because that, that keeps coming up, and I'm afraid that it's going to keep coming up because unfortunately, they make these airsoft guns look like an actual gun. And, and our kids, and not all of them, it's a very small percent, it's really about 1%, but they carry them and then they try to make themselves look tough. So there's zero guns on campus as of now in Worcester Public Schools this school year.
Thank you. That's it. Member Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, I too, like Member Guardiola, most of the questions I had jotted down and made notes on have been approached and have been answered. Going back to Member Mailman's request about the safety, the safety audit and where we're at with that, I too would like to make the motion to have that given to us in private section and see what schools have been, have been updated. In regard to, Member Biancaria asked my question also on the weapons, about, because it's not listed in those categories. So I'm going to tweak my question to ask if a child, if a student is found with a weapon on their person at school, what is the protocol and procedure that follows?
Mr. Tony?
Sorry, through the chair, the police are immediately notified so they can come to the building and retrieve that weapon, and then we process them on a felony of having a firearm.
Thank you very much. My last question is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Through the chair, we just wanted some clarification. You, you are specifically speaking of firearms, or are you asking about?
No, I'm asking about a jackknife.
Sure. So those are 37H, and so that is handled, that's one of, as we refer to it, the big three, right? And as Member Biancaria or Member Benanda mentioned prior, we don't have to always go through all those restorative practices in those situations. We are not held to that accountability under the law. So when that happens, those students typically will face a long-term suspension hearing. Those are confiscated by us, it depends, you know, that's a broad range of what could be a weapon, and those are investigated thoroughly, and then typically it goes to a long-term suspension hearing.
Thank you very much for the clarification. The last question I have is in regard to climate and culture, and I think they're establishing relationships of trust. And if a student comes to them and tells them in confidence of the fact that outside of school that student might be in danger or in a precarious, bad situation, the climate and cult, I'm assuming they're, you know, yeah, you know what I mean. So how do they proceed to make sure outside of school that that child is being taken care of while not betraying that trust that they've built? And that's my last question.
Through the chair, they're mandated reporters. So in no way, shape, or form were they able to keep that information to themselves. That would be a conversation that they would have with the assistant principals, the dean, the counselors, and ultimately the principal, and they will work to provide the supports necessary for those students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Member Alvaro?
We've all been able to come, and so why not, right? Guess I'll wrap, I guess I'll wrap it up. I do appreciate your presentation, that was a lot of information. And I, I've been thinking a lot about 37H. I know it's a law, it's more on a state level, but I really like to see how we try different ways to eliminate school-to-prison pipeline and keeping students in schools and referring to the weapons and everything that falls under that law. It'll be interesting to continue to learn how we can tackle these out in the community, because from my understanding, when a child is not on the school ground or is involved in these type of things, it, they get, they stay out of the school. And I really want to learn, we're all here, we can always advocate to our senators to kind of make this a bigger deal, but it's very punitive to me to have, to see that. I know those, I'm not dismissing the discipline part, I'm not dismissing holding them accountable, but at the same time, if we have like a 12-year-old child or someone who's very young and gets into trouble and is expelled from the school because of these charges or whatever the case is for them, it's just very sad to see them not being able to return to school for something that happened outside of school. So I'm hoping that we can continue to build those connections with our family, because that's one of the things that you guys really talked about. Think a little bit of, that was brushed across the board about building those connections and strengthening those, those, strengthening those connections. So just wanted to put that out there. And again, thank you so much. And my last thing, I did just want to say, when it comes to attention span, it, you know, it's changed throughout the years, but kids in all, kids in our schools, their attention spans are, I would say roughly maybe 20 to 30 minutes. And if a kid has a disability or it's, they're going through a lot of things, that's even shortened even more. So I'm really appreciative that they have these built relationships with the school climate. People who are able to, you know, just pull them out for that little break or take them on that walk, kind of help them self-regulate or help them get back into the lunchroom. Mental health does exist.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to thank you for the report. It's been a long night and far along, it was nice, it was interesting then, a lot of good questions. And I do appreciate, this is our really first year with the, I know we started last year, the climate and culture and dean, and this is the real first year we put it all together stronger than what it was last year. And I'm looking forward to additional reports and especially when it comes from the dean. Dean, I think you did a great job speaking about it and the effect you can have on students, and I really appreciate that. I really believe in this program. I think we'll make the difference if you have the right people doing the job. And you have to be really into it, and especially all the challenges you can face with a bunch of young people in the schools. So I just want to thank you for that, I'm a big supporter of this program. And, and the one thing I always say is statistics, right, and stats, and that is good, I get it, I get it. But when it comes to the DESI numbers, it drives me crazy every year. They don't ever seem to be accurate, something's missing. I just, I could be wrong on that, but that's my impression. It's been an impression for the previous superintendent, it's been superintendent before that one, her, and when the, when the moon and on. And it's one of the most frustrating parts, trying to figure out the DESI and our numbers, and our numbers look pretty good, so I want to thank you for the stats. And because the worst thing I think you'd do to a child is to take them out of the school setting. Unless there's really accountability issues and you have a whole process in place, I'm sure you evaluate the seriousness of the incident or the issue. And, and be clear too, it's just not like the policy of Rachel Marret saying this is what we're going to do, this is state law, you know, it was changed three years ago. We put policies in place that relate to that state law and making sure that a child, a child doesn't want to go to the wooded day, I'd say the majority, 99% of the time, doesn't want to go to the wooded day, doesn't want to go to the challenge and reach. It's not like they're proud of that, you know, that they're there, that they, they want to like go back with their friends, they want to be part of the community, and they want to graduate. And you want, and sometimes it takes a few students who are all different levels, and sometimes you have to go through a whole process to get there. But I think we have the three to five day end health suspension, I believe, and they're out of the classroom, and you try to work with the dean of students and the culture and climate change personnel we have. And I think it's going to work if we stick with it, I really do. It's working now, I think we probably have a good example at Burnco. Maybe we should take them for an example, even get, I don't want to take a school and just bring them out, but if they're interested, provide a report specifically on Burnco High School and the effect they had on these students. You can figure out what kind of data you want to give to us. But what's the positivity compared to last year, if that they even exist, and going forward? And I think, I think, I'd like to see that. If you want to do it, it's up to you. I don't want to like put anybody in the spot because all these stats are all combined into the whole school system that we get, which is good, it's good. And, but it's, I'd be interested if someone gives us an example, and we do a process for next year and see the effect month by month, or at the end of the year that we think is appropriate. People got to remember too, that we had $22 million tax cut in Worcester Public Schools, or 21 million, whatever it was. And we made the best decisions that we thought we'd make, you know, so jobs were eliminated, services were cut, and I still think we're really impacting the student the best we can. And we're going to continue to do that. I'm a believer in this, these programs. And that's, maybe that's, Dr. Lampy, so I know we have two motions on from, it's been, it's been, Member Benanda and Member Johnson about the wellness room, whether we get that stat in May. I think, Member Biancaria, I mean, could, to me, you could answer this, January is to me is too early maybe for this, get a report. Does it make sense, or does it make sense, I think, Member Biancaria is one, make sure we get it before the budget, is it, is it late to the end of the year to May and get those stats for the June meeting?
Through the chair, I couldn't speak to the timing of it in terms of making budget decisions, because that's beyond my expertise.
Yeah.
In terms of the way the data would be interpreted, the wellness rooms so far, it would be, obviously getting more data over the course of the school year would provide a broader picture of their use and patterns of use over the course of the year. Some things to consider could include that students, especially during the winter months, or when they have had more time around exams, for instance, around midterms, use might spike, or it could also decrease if they're spending more time taking exams and things like that. Given that we don't have a ton of historical data on their use so far, we wouldn't know whether or not what we're observing month to month is indicative of a quote-unquote "true change" in how students are using them, or if it falls more along the lines of whether or not in January use tends to spike and then in February it decreases. That's the benefit of having the historical data year over year to compare it to. So as of right now, knowing that we would not be able to draw those close interpretations in January.
Okay, so I think, so all right, let's get the data through May and provide to the thing, and if that's okay with everybody. Okay. I just want to say is that we're all in this together, right? We're all in this as a community, as a school, school committee, and we just got to work together and really ask the tough questions. Everybody's accountable, I'm accountable, administration superintendent's accountable, school committee is accountable, the people at these tables accountable, and right down the line. And, but, and I just think the whole atmosphere and the, from the administrator's perspective, from the student's perspective, there seems to be something jelling here. And that's my perspective, and maybe people disagree, but we just got to stay positive, but also understanding there's going to be some tough questions asked, that we're going down the right track. And I think that's important as we move forward. So I just want to thank again for the presentation, and I think I'm looking forward to the next report from this. You get more questions, I think, tonight than any other report that was provided to us. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for the report. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the, so the motion is to file this and to pass, take it collectively with the motions, all the motions that were made. Do you have all those motions collectively? Are those in favor, opposed, or ordered? Okay, a question, Member McCullough?
I know it was like eight years ago that I first spoke on this, but I had a clarifying question about one of Member Biancaria's questions regarding the wellness room, if the superintendent could just clarify. The wellness room, while there may be multiple climate and culture people that might bring a child to the wellness room, typically in the wellness room throughout the day, it's the director of that wellness room, and perhaps maybe the dean comes in or a climate and culture person brings someone, there's not that many adults in that wellness room throughout the day, is that correct? Because I think, Mr. Tony, I mean, when that question was answered, it said that yes, there could be as many as, you know, nine people, but that's not the case, correct?
Through the chair, no, there's one person that's a full-time employee assigned to the wellness room, and then people might be coming in and out for different reasons.
Through the chair, could you just ask Member Biancaria to ask, say what she was asking, because that's what I was unclear on.
Member Biancaria?
Thank you. The statement was there were nine rooms that were set up like that, so that's where the nine came from, nine staff members in those rooms.
Thank you, that was what I was trying to clarify.
In one room, I was going with the whole district and the program itself.
Thank you, that was, that helped me clarify that, because I wanted to make sure we were all on the same page about that, thank you.
No, it's nine rooms.
Okay, so, okay, so we have, onto our next item. And I just want to say, and thank you for clarifying on the weapons and the guns, that there's zero guns in the schools. I think that was an important statement to make, because people, when you say weapons, I think they don't think of knives, they think of the guns. So, next item is to consider the possible revisions to the school boundary assignments and the school quadrant assignments to become effective for the '26, '27 school year, put out the fog. Member Mailman?
Could I also ask that this gets sent to TLSS, please, to both committees? We've talked about equity and programming a lot in our teaching and learning programs, so could we send this to both committees?
I hate sending to two committees, because it's the same report.
Through the chair.
Yeah, like I know doing on the council.
Yes.
You want a motion to go to both committees?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, do a roll call, roll call. Member Johnson?
I, if I can, can, can I also just actually make a motion on this? Amina Superintendent talked about this and this might be a big boo-boo, I'm sorry, administration on this. So we have a boundary issue around Burnco, Doherty District somewhere where a lot of kids go to Nelson Place and then they go to Forest Grove, but then when they go to high school, they have to go to Burnco, which they lose out on the connections and stuff that they had and I know Forest Grove has a lot of kids, but I'm not sure, does any way this come in school year, well, next year, if we could look at maybe trying to support some of those students that might want to still go to Doherty because they had that connection? I don't know how we do that, but is that something we could look at as part of this and come up with something towards the end of the school year so we could kind of know? Or is that too much to ask and we should just let the boundary stuff work itself out?
Through the chair, so that is definitely part of what we're looking at in this. When you think about the maturation of a child, you'd rather them, if we have to separate them off, separate them off after elementary school, not after middle school because they just, that's such a formative time, that middle school. I think it would be very difficult, I don't know number-wise, to give an option for that group of students, I know exactly what you're talking about, to attend Forest Grove, we may not have the space. Oh, to attend Doherty, yes, we may not have the space for next school year.
Right.
Which is what I think you're asking for. I, I would ask that you ask us, allow us to look at some things and see, I don't think we can promise that at this very moment, Doherty's already over, starting to become overcrowded, but we can definitely take a look. The goal will be though, for the following year to fix all of that, so no matter, our goal will be to have wherever child starts their middle school, that they have a feeder matriculation into the high school unless the family so chooses to send them to a different high school. So that will be the goal for this process, we'll look at the other, no promises though.
No, no problem, thank you.
Member Bonanda?
So that's been going on since way before 1965 because I was one of those students that went to Indian Hill School, then Forest Grove and then would've had to go to Burnco. And we were told that you could apply special permission if you wanted to go to Doherty, so that may, I'm just suggesting that might be what has to happen in those cases. But also I'm wondering, I'm worried about programs, I know Member Mailman brought that up about special programs, so when you look at these boundaries, I'm just worried that we also are able to have access to those kids that, for example, the dance magnet at Worcester's Magnet and the kids going to Burnco Middle and then on to Burnco High School, that we're, we're still able to offer those opportunities to kids when we change the lines, if we, if we change the lines. I was just wondering, is, what was the reason why we want to change the lines that it was brought up in the first place?
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, variety of things. One, this example that Vice Chair Johnson just brought up where children don't matriculate from middle school on. You can be a student at Vernon Hill, Member Guardiola has experienced because that's his area and some of those students go to South High, or I'm sorry, they go to Sullivan and then South, some are going off to Worcester East, it's, and families don't totally understand it. I personally don't understand the whole Midland, not Midland, which one is it? That's on Forest Grove? McGrath, thank you, McGrath, where they're literally on Forest Grove's, they're like behind them on their campus for the most part, but then they don't attend Forest Grove, they go to Burnco. So we just want to look at it all, so that's one. And then we have a growing number of families, new developments in the city, we need to make sure that our boundaries are reflecting the changes in the city because we have some of our schools that are becoming overcrowded whereas others are, they are under. And so trying to find a way to do that. We, we may realize after going through this process that we can't, but I, I firmly believe that we can do some improvements, we may not be able to do all of them. So the city is changing and, and we've learned more since, you know, the, since 1965 even, right? And so we want to try to improve upon what we know, what's in the best interest of children and how the city is being, is shifting.
Member McCullough?
Thank you and through the chair, I know Member Bonanda just asked that question, but I know I myself filed an item around this at one point and I believe Member Johnson may have either because we had growing concerns about some of the developments in certain areas of the city and educators and buildings had reached out to us to express concern about, we have this new apartment complex going up, it's going to be in our district, we don't have the space for this, what are, what are we going to do? So I do appreciate that the district is looking into it and I know we certainly have some caveats that both Member Johnson and Bonanda brought up about some of the different areas in the city, but I know that we need to look at this because of the housing situation, so thank you.
Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, or a pair of, yeah, I, we, I'd like to get a clarification if we can send it to two committees, the reason being as I chair one of the committees and if we have two different opinions or two different outcomes coming up, then we're going to have a contradiction on the floor. So I'd like to get a clarification, I'm not opposed to it if it does, if it's allowed, I just would like to make sure that.
Usually it goes, practice is always send it to one committee.
Right, again, I just didn't know if it's allowed, that was my, my question.
No, it's always been the one committee, so. So the motion is to, okay, so everyone set? The motion is to send it to two committees, roll call. What's that?
Member Mailman?
What if we, since we're in the early stages of that, and I truly believe that there's financial considerations, but there's also learning considerations, that we keep it in administration until the next phase when information will come back to all of us and there may be aspects of some of this work that would go to either place and it would be easier to delineate it. So I'm thinking we're not going to really have more information on this till the end of the year, till, till the end of this school year. Why, I, my preference would be that we, this to me seems so broad, the work of this item is so broad that I can see items in both places. We talked about the special, we've talked about admissions for programs all over the city and almost every damn meeting, sorry Marie, that we've had in TLSS, so could I ask my colleagues for consideration of that?
Of what, just to hold it somewhere?
Yeah, to keep it in administration.
We have a report.
We have our next, until there's more data that comes back to us. There's nothing that's in front of us right now.
Making a big thing out of this, but we have five committee members on the, on the thing.
Then can, so if I make that motion, then we can vote it up or down. I'll make the motion that we keep this item in administration.
Okay, the first motion, okay, so we have three motions on the floor. First is to send it to FOG, that's the first motion. The second motion is to do both and the third motion is to hold it, right?
Yep.
Okay, so the first motion is to defend, send it to FOG only, roll call.
Member Alvarez? Can I just vote for the second one? Okay, so no.
Okay.
Member Biancaria?
Yes.
Member Bonanda?
No.
Member Guardiola?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Petty?
Yes, okay, it's going to FOG then. Okay, next item. Request that the number of employees currently on paid medical leave and average length of time of said paid leave. Member Guardiola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, really just thinking about our future budget, so if the school committee's focused on forecasting next year's budget, requesting data on the number of employees currently on paid medical leave and on the average length that, that leave is, helps us in a couple forms and fronts. Cost estimation, you know, staffing issues, if substitutes or temporary staff are required to cover for employees on leave, this adds an additional financial consideration. Identifying trends and projections, reviewing historical data on medical leave usage can help us predict future patterns. If leave usage is increasing, the commitments from the committee might have to be allocated, might have to up the allocation for more resources to accommodate these costs. And then the operation planning, the data ensures that we have sufficient resources that we allocate to maintain consistent staffing levels and minimizing disruptions to student education. So by incorporating this information into the budget forecasting process, the school committee can make a more informed decision in maintaining financial stability while meeting employee needs.
Thank you. So send that to the administration, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. And the next item is unpaid leave and the average length of time, is that the same argument? So send that to administration?
Yeah, as it reads, same, same argument.
Okay, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Request number of employees that max six leave in both 2022 and 2023 years.
Yeah, same argument again, Mr. Mayor, just again, it goes to understanding our forecasting budget, especially when there are concerns about budgeting in the next few years.
Okay, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Request that the MIAA proposal that would make flag football, girls varsity sport in '25, '26, additionally, if the proposal passes, the work to add as an offering in the Worcester Public Schools.
As it reads.
As it reads, send that to TLSS, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. If they have a motion to, motion to adjourn, that's it, those in favor, opposed, so ordered.